Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 20 regular meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. Let the record reflect that all members are present with the exception of Commissioner Lucas, who has a planned absence this evening. And so we do have a quorum, and the meeting is called to order. Thank you, and if you'll rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a brief period set aside here for Planning Commissioner announcements? Are there any announcements this evening? Richard?
Today, obviously, at the same time we're having this meeting, or more or less, in Cambria, there's going to be a town hall meeting regarding the wind energy. And we're hoping that, well, maybe they try to have a town hall here. Hopefully, that's something, you know, be scheduled there, you know, for all the Estero Bay communities. But yeah, it's going on right now between 6:00 and 8:00 at the town hall in Cambria.
Cambria. Okay. Any other? See, no other announcements, then? We'll move on to our public comment period. This is a time set aside for any member of the public to come forward and speak to us on basically anything that's on your mind. So I'll open it up, and we'd love to hear from you.
I have a question about the two-story house on the bluff overlooking the Embarcadero on Marina Street. And I, you know, two-story houses on the bluff aren't legal in our town. Was that a remodel? Is it a new house? It isn't an addition? I don't understand how there's a two-story house on a bluff overlooking the Embarcadero. And then my second question is, are you no longer providing agendas at the back of the hall?
I will have to apologize for not bringing the agendas with us. Yeah, we're sort of doing other business before we came over here and forgot to grab them. That's my fault. I apologize.
Anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Seeing none, then, I will close public comment. And Scott, do you have any information on the house that she's? Are you aware of that project?
I believe it was a project that came before the plant. It was a Planning Commission project. It was Whitney's, I think, right?
It was. It was a Planning Commission project, and I know that there's a buffer zone from the bluff. I believe it's 25 feet. I will double-check that for you. And it's a one-story development from the 25-foot mark to the 50-foot mark, and then two-story development from the 50-foot mark back.
So what you're saying?
Excuse me, and good evening, Commissioners, Whitney Mountlevane. I am familiar with that project. Between Surf Street, right down here, and Marina, I believe it is, maybe it's Anchor, between Surf and Anchor, there is a section of the Embarcadero where the normal bluff setbacks do not, in fact, apply. The way they, you can actually build down the face of the bluff, kind of like Front Street.
So that's included in the sort of the Embarcadero, or the mid-Embarcadero section?
The mid-Embarcadero section has a different set of bluff standards.
Right.
And that particular house was a remodel, and that was probably before you, about a year and a half or so ago, maybe two.
Okay. Very good. All right. We have no presentations this evening, so we will move on to our consent calendar, which consists this evening of our current and advanced planning processing list and minutes from the May 2 and May 16 meeting. Are there any comments on any of those items, or wouldn't anybody like to pull one for further discussion? Or do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar, A1 through A3.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Thank you very much. Moving on, moving right ahead to public hearings. Item number B1 this evening. We have only one public hearing this evening, which is item number B1, case number CP0-545, involving a relatively familiar site at 500 Detascadero Road here in Morro Bay, California. And I think Joan is going to talk to us about that.
Thank you, Commissioner Teuf, and fellow commissioners. So as you stated, the first item before you this evening is a request for coastal development permit for the undergrounding of utilities at the Silver City RV Park located at 500 Detascadero. Please note that as part of this permit application and proposal, no new development is proposed. The aerial map shows the location of the site with the red arrows specifically indicating the two locations on the property where the new utility connections were installed in the ground. And at the November 1, 2016, Planning Commission meeting, the Commission reviewed and subsequently voted 5-0 to conditionally approve a proposal for a change in use on two parcels within the existing Silver City Mobile Home Park. It's currently zoned M1 PDI for interim use. And as you may recall, the applicant began work without the proper permits from the city upon receiving misinformation from the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Had the city been involved from the start, the project would have required a Phase 1 archaeological study and most likely onsite monitoring per the requirements set forth in the California Environmental Quality Act. Last week, I received a phone call from Patty Dunton of the Salinin Tribe of Monterey in San Luis Obispo Counties. And we spoke about this, and she just asked as a public service announcement that we would remind the public that a Phase 1 archaeological study and appropriate monitoring, if necessary, is a requirement for developments of this nature. But again, because of the current situation, what had happened with HCD and the work starting without permits from us, local jurisdiction, that did not happen. The applicant received approval for a change in use from commercial storage to an RV park. And at that time, city staff with concurrence from the Coastal Commission staff determined that a coastal development permit was not required for the extension of utility service or the expansion of the RV use, resulting in the applicant pursuing only the approval of the interim use permit. The processing of the coastal development permit, as requested by Coastal Commission staff, effectively amounts to a cleanup of the overall permitting process. The proposed project is consistent with the earlier Planning Commission approval of the interim use permit, UP0458, and remains compliant with applicable development standards of the zoning ordinance and all applicable provisions of the general plan and the local coastal plan. The utility infrastructure includes electric sewer and water service to 32 new visitor-serving RV spaces. The electrical design was prepared by a certified electrical engineer and includes metered pedestals with protective bollards at each space, a main switchboard, two substations, and a transformer. The water and sewer design was prepared by a licensed architect and includes service to each space. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission adopt the Class 3 and Class 2 categorical exemptions and approve the coastal development permit, CP0545, subject to the findings and conditions of approval as specified in Resolution 18-17. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me start out, then, by asking if anyone has ex parte communications with regard to this project to reveal? Very good. Then are there any questions for staff?
I have one question, and it may not actually even relate that closely to what's before us, but the development on the park is for short-term visitor-serving commercial. Is that by choice of the applicant, or is that city zoning or state regulation? It's not possible to make this a longer-term kind of residential accommodation?
That's correct. That's correct. At this time, it is zoned M1 PDI, and the interim use overlay zone allows for short-term visitor-serving commercial uses, but not long-term stays, if you will.
Residential.
So residential use. That has the potential to maybe change as we go through the general plan update, but at this time, no. They are not allowed. It is city mandate that it is short-term visitor-serving commercial.
And so the homes that are there on other parts of the property that have been longstanding, are those also short-term, or are they longer-term?
I believe that they are longer-term because they were there before this zoning map was in place, yes.
If memory serves, we had a pretty healthy discussion, and the gentleman that was in charge, or the owner or applicant representative, they talked about that he was putting individual meters at these different stations. And he was not at all opposed to maybe, because we started discussing affordable housing and stuff and, you know, higher density. And when I was talking to Michael, kind of discussing that, that's, that's, so I'm clear, if we go pursue and we start looking at the general plan and reviewing that, that's something that we could entertain, yeah?
If the land use were to change? Yeah. I mean, it's, I mean, the mobile home portion of it's already pretty dense. I don't know how much denser you're trying to make housing, but that's, you know, the mobile home portion of it's fairly dense. Those are, units are fairly close together if you've gone through there, so.
And there'd probably be some discussion with the Coastal Commission regarding the loss of visitor-serving uses, so we'd have to balance it out, I imagine.
Our discussions with them to this point related to land use changes is, they kind of like us to balance out. So if you're changing something over here away from visitor-serving, you're putting, you know, a commensurate amount of visitor-serving area back, so we have the same amount. No net loss has kind of been the discussion up to this point.
Okay. And I recollect that we also had a fairly detailed discussion about screening, and some requirements were added regarding screening, I guess, to UP0-458. Those are still in effect, then?
Absolutely, yes, sir. And those improvements have been put in at this point. He has complied with all of the conditions of approval.
Excellent.
In that conversation about screening, too, we brought up the internal landscaping. And with the excavation that's been done there, you can really see, you know, what I was concerned about is the requirement that we should be able, or the ability that we should have to be able to require a certain amount of internal screening, too, especially because we, most of the view is from an overlook area of 41. And so in the future, or, you know, in future projects, or can we tag this site specifically to require, you know, future internal screening and internal landscaping on projects like this?
I mean, it could be something that we roll out, you know, as part of the zoning code update, which we're going to speak to a little bit as a later item on the agenda tonight. But that could be something that gets rolled into, you know, landscape requirements, and because it could be specific to this Highway 41 corridor, specifically the south side.
Do we have the ability, because it's a mobile home park, to require internal landscaping as such in the park?
I mean, it's not something we've looked at to this point. So the issue, I would say, is that site's tight. And so, you know, we've already approved through the conditionally used process the location and the number of units. What's left is essentially the roads and the circulation system that get you inside the site. I don't know that there's a whole bunch more room there. I mean, we could sit down and talk to the applicant about that, and he's actually in the audience, so he might be able to speak to whether there's, you know, places available to add something like that. I don't know. I mean, it's not something we looked at before we came here.
Yeah.
The meeting this evening, I mean.
This is a public hearing, and so at this point, I would like to open it up for public comment. Anyone who'd like to speak to this item? We typically give the applicant the opportunity to speak first if he would like to do so, so please come forward. We'd love to hear from him.
Thank you. Just to kind of elaborate on your question, sorry, or your concern is, yes, I would love to. Angus, I'm the applicant. I would love to make it more permanent and supply affordable, permanent housing there, if possible. There is a real demand for it, and there's not a lot of affordable senior housing in Morro Bay. As you know, it's very costly. So Scott said he would work with you guys to maybe put it on, to redo the city development. I'm probably misquoting that somehow, but, but yes, it's, the infrastructure is built as such to where we could, I don't need to do anything to the underground utilities to change that. It's already built either way. We could go transient, or we could go permanent, the way that the utilities are. So I wouldn't have to do anything as far as infrastructure or anything with HCD or anything to be able to do that. It's already, the way I built it, it was set to go either way. So I guess what I'm saying is that I would be very open to making it more permanent and to supply affordable housing. I guess that's what I wanted to say.
Very good. And I'm sorry, could we get your last name as well?
Keith. Yeah, my apologies. Angus Keith.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak to this item this evening?
Betty Winholz. The statement in the staff report that says in bold, "No new development," is, to me, a little bit misleading, because it's my understanding that development is anything that changes something, whether it's utilities or not. So maybe that meant that we're not doing something new because we already approved it in the past. But to say that this does not involve development, I think, is a little bit misleading or a misnomer, because that's how we define it in the Coastal Act and in our LCP. Just want to make that point. If this went ahead without permits from the city, are there penalties for the person that went ahead without the proper approval? That's one question. Who is keeping track of the water? And by that, I mean, we're adding temporary water, but maybe people will be there every week. And if it goes from temporary to permanent, is there some way the city is keeping track of all these accumulated projects that we're adding more and more to our water system? And at what point do we get to hear about that? You know, and at what point do we know that we've maxed out? And so my concern is, it's kind of a creepy, you know, creeping thing where, you know, we have this level of water, and we say, oh, we can approve this project, and we can approve that and that. But at what point does it become cumulative, and we know what we've done in the last five years, three years, or whatever? So I'm asking about that process. There was one other thing. And certainly, I hear what the applicant is saying about that he would be very open to permanent residents, and I know all of us who live here know that that's a really good thing. At the same time, we hear what the Coastal Commission is saying, is we still have to provide visitor-serving for low-income people. So it's a real trade-off, and I think it will become more of a dilemma as we move along. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, then, I will close public comment, bring it back to the Commission for discussion. Who'd like to lead off this evening? Let's pick on Joe.
At this point, I have no objections to what the applicant is trying to do. And I recall, we had a pretty extensive meeting when the applicant was before us, and we addressed what our concerns were. Again, my only thought is a wish that we can actually turn this sometime in the near future into affordable housing. And since this was originally...
Time's up.
It must be a come so early in the meeting on my presentation. As I recall, this was originally a storage lot and not, I would imagine that's not visitor-serving, so the, so are we saying that because we're adding this as visitor-serving facilities, should we later decide to remove it from that inventory, that we would run into a problem with the Coastal Commission?
It's more of a global concept. You see the zoning on the map there, and so you have a certain area that's covered by the CVS zoning. If we were to change it so that they could add more mobile homes and remove the RVs, then you have an area that we'd be changing the zoning to something else that allows for residential development, consistent with a mobile home park or even permanent residences, I mean, wherever you wanted to go with that. And so the idea would be that we would have to take that land area, the three acres, two acres, one acre, whatever it is, and locate it somewhere else, likely adjacent to other areas that are zoned CVS, and put it back there. If we didn't do that, it's likely that the Coastal Commission would have a problem with it. And that's based on current conversations with them. They really don't want a net loss of land that's zoned for commercial visitor-serving uses, so.
Scott, on that same theme, would we get credits for the increased use of Airbnb and those as the temporary rentals?
I don't know that they delve into it that deeply. I think it really, I mean, it really was the land that's available for those types of uses, because visitor-serving uses can be a number of different things. Maybe commercial retail stores, restaurants, they can be accommodations for visitors to come and stay at, whether that's RV parks or hotel rooms or motel rooms or whatever, whatever it may be. It may be a number of different things that could go there. And so they're really just concerned with the overall land that's available for that. Or, you know, maybe it is because we're doing the update right, and possibly doing the general plan, LCP, and zoning code update right now, that you have another zoning classification where we specifically allocate that, oh, this area could also accommodate, you know, you add as an and, could add in visitor-serving accommodations in that, and that would suffice to do it as well. I've seen that work with the Coastal Commission as well. This is not just CVS, but it's one of our other zoning classifications that allows for commercial, and then you add on the side of that that, yes, CVS is one that would be specific, or commercial visitor-serving would be allowed there, too.
Okay. Excuse me, and then also, isn't this, didn't we allocate a water equivalency unit for this project? To answer a previous question.
So we track water. We report to the council every year. We re-adopt the ordinance, the resolution that goes along with water allocations. Traditionally, that's the water equivalency unit discussion. We had that at the last council meeting, actually. And so that's how we track it, and we track actual physical use, you know, through meters and so forth. We don't, we're not, you know, clearly all that close to the maximum amount of water that we can use. I think we're quite a bit below it at this point, based on that analysis that was done for the city council at the last meeting, so. But they do, they do look over this. This project potentially could have been required to acquire WEUs for this, but was not because the council suspended that. It's not going to have to pay them. But that's fine, I mean, because we already, you have to pay water impact fees, and you have to pay your water fees. I mean, WEUs is a third water fee that we have, three, not four. It's a third water fee that we have, and we implement it in times when we're in drought situations and things like that, so that we can have money to accommodate offsets of our water use through conservation efforts.
If memory serves, we have, he has meters on all those, all those separate lots that we put in, right? So water meters is what I'm talking about.
Correct.
So that, that water use is going to be tracked, right?
Absolutely.
It is tracked, yes.
Yeah, okay. For each, each unit.
I think he's submetering. I mean, we have the city's meter that's at the front for overall use, I think. We're not billing based on RV site. Pretty sure.
Okay, okay. And then regarding the issue of the penalties, I think that was discussed back in November or whatever, and I think there was that confusion between, can you give us a little background on that?
That's a fair question that was asked, and normally, that could be something that we do implement penalties. But in this instance, the applicant, because he's operating an RV park and mobile home park, when you want to do things in those parks, the city is not, we don't review those from a building department standpoint. It's regulated by HCD. And so the owner did what he knew to go do, and that was to go to HCD and get permission to add these spaces. And we had an issue with HCD as a result of it, you know, and so we ended up stopping working them and found out that that was the case. It was to no fault of his own. He thought he was following the correct procedure, so we didn't think it appropriate to fine him. And we brought him into this process, and hence the reason you've seen him once already through the CUP process, and now through the CDP process, because Coastal sort of changed their mind about whether it required one or not. It's an unfortunate situation, and one we're hoping we're not going to have anymore with HCD. I'm not so confident that that's the case, that we won't have them anymore. I mean, I've, over the 19-plus years I've been a planner on Central Coast, it's popped up repeatedly. So I don't know that their memory is all that great, or maybe some folks over there don't really care. But it is a land use change. It does expand the use there, and it absolutely 100% requires city permits through the planning process, and they sort of ignored that, so.
And for the sake of, like, a lot of the public, you know, HCD?
The Department of Housing and Community Development.
Okay. And it's a county, a county or state?
State agency.
State agency, yeah. Okay. And then I was kind of going to follow up as far as the, if there was any EDUs allotted for this project, because you're expanding, what, 32? Is, I mean, is that part of the?
The Water Equivalency Unit program has been suspended by the council.
And when was that happening?
Last council meeting.
Last council meeting. Okay.
Idea being, though, also, we have the one water plan in place, and so we're going to, that process and the science that was based behind it was not solid. It said we reached our maximum population of 12,200 in the year 2000. We've never had a population of 12,200, and that might show you a little bit of the math that was going on behind it. So we're going to update it and come back with a program that actually is based on real science, not whatever we did back then. And that was based on different water sources. It was based on groundwater usage, and our water source is state water. So there was a number of issues that sort of sat behind that that didn't make a whole lot of sense. And so we're trying to come back with a project, a proposal that does make sense as it relates to allocation of water, so.
Well, and then just for the record, I mentioned this originally, and when we talked about, and I don't want to burden the issue, but the sewer capacity issue is a concern. That area, I'm not positive on, you know, as far as the sewer infrastructure may That area, I'm not positive on, you know, as far as the sewer infrastructure main, okay? However, later on, we can talk about another area.
Well, I'm generally in favor of people having electricity and water and sewer. So I don't have a lot to add to what's already been said. I was surprised to hear that the WEUs were not awarded, but I guess we're in transition to a whole new program, so that sort of explains that. So with that, do we have a motion with regard to CP 0-545?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number PC 18-17. Is that the correct one? And the coastal development permit, number CPO-545, for 500 of Tascadero Road.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, then, can we have a roll call, please, Joan?
Commissioner Sadowski.
Aye.
Commissioner Luer.
Yes.
Commissioner Ingraffia.
Yes.
And Chairman Teck.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
4-0. Thank you very much. So that's our only public hearing for this evening. We will move on to new business. We have two items. Item number C1, which is a discussion of the zoning code diagnosis memo, which comes to us by way of the General Plan Advisory Committee. I guess that the representative from Michael Baker International is sort of going to take us through this, and I'll pass it over to Scott for the introduction.
Actually, we have Martha Miller here from RRM. She's a sub to Michael Baker, and she's taking care of the zoning code portion of the general plan, LCP update, which is zoning code and implementation plan.
Good.
Martha?
Great. Thank you very much, Commissioners. I'm Martha Miller. I'm leading the zoning code update portion of your larger plan, Moro Bay effort. And for the zoning code, we're at the very early stages of this update portion, and tonight I'll be giving you an introduction and an overview of that portion of the project, talk about what zoning is and what it does, the overall process for the code update, and then talk about what initially we observed to be kind of the big-picture issues with the current code and recommended approaches for moving forward as we get into the update. So I always like to start kind of with an overview of why we're here and why the city has embarked on this effort. The city and the community is really putting a lot of time, effort, and resources into the update of the general plan and the local coastal land use plan. And these plans together are the documents that really set out the vision for the future of the community. And zoning codes, and tonight I'll be talking about zoning codes, I'm using that term to also include the coastal implementation plan, because you're in the coastal zone. But zoning codes are one of the key tools in implementing those plans. So overall, the purpose of the zoning code is to... The zoning code update is to, number one, be consistent with and implement that general plan and your local coastal land use plan, promote high-quality design, respond to neighborhood concerns that you've heard, particularly about character, project design, to have a code that's modern and that really reflects current land uses, development types, current development patterns. It provides clear decision-making protocols and where appropriate streamlined review processes, complies with state and federal law, and then overall is clear, it's concise, and it's easy to use and understand. So as I said, we're in the beginning stages of the project. We've spent some time doing research and reconnaissance, looking at your current code, talking to code users, to staff, the general plan advisory committee, looking at what's been built, kind of assessing whether that's a result of or despite your current regulations. And we've taken kind of all these observations, what we've saw, what we've read, what we've heard, into the code diagnosis memo, which you have, and which is really meant to capture those big-picture issues. And again, those recommendations as we move into the zoning code to keep in... To the update, to keep in mind. So we're here today to introduce that and get some feedback on the memo. Once we do that and we start drafting the regulations, we'll break those, the drafting of those regulations into parts, because if we were to come forward with a completely new zoning code, you know, 400, 500 pages of regulations, it's a little much to take in at one time. So we break it into parts. We have three separate kind of discrete chunks: administrative provisions, citywide standards, so that's standards for things that either apply citywide or to multiple zoning districts, and then district regulations in the zoning map. The reason we're taking them in this order is because you're updating your general plan concurrently, and the citywide standards and the district standards are most reflective of the individual policies in your general plan, so we need to wait till those get further along before we can really start diving into those sections. But we draft those, and we take those through staff review, the committee review, commission review, and the public review. We get feedback on those preliminary drafts, take all the feedback that we receive, make revisions, package them then all together into a complete draft, and look at that again holistically. And again, go through the committee, commission, and public review, and then we go through the formal adoption and review process. So it's really about building the familiarity and the ownership, and really getting direction throughout the process for that. So as I said, it's part of the collective plan, Moro Bay effort, and doing it in parallel with the general plan, the local coastal plan update. And again, that really, those lay out the vision, and it gives the zoning code really the marching orders, because the zoning code is what implements the policies in those plan. So it's great that this is happening together and they can really work simultaneously. So, what is zoning? In my opinion, when it gets down to it, zoning is really about being a good neighbor. It's about having the rules and the regulations in place so that as development comes forward, it, number one, implements it as consistent with what the community has collectively agreed on what the vision is, and then also looks at minimizing potential adverse effects. So it's really fitting, about having it fit in well and encourage the optimal land use patterns. And we always think about economic and fiscal sustainability, and does it make sense to do? Because if things don't make sense, they aren't going to happen, and you're not going to see that change that implements what the community has identified as for the future. Historically, zoning has taken really a kind of a negative approach, or a thou shall not approach. It was really born out of problems with incompatibilities between different uses. So it really focused on what you cannot do. As we've seen over time, that this approach doesn't exactly get us to where we want to go, there's been a shift in the approach to zoning, where it tends to be more positive and design-friendly than what you had seen in some older codes. So we look at being, focusing on what you want to see, not only what you don't want to see. And throughout the process, we're always looking at trade-offs, because there's always a balance in how much regulation versus how much flexibility, how much to be prescriptive versus how much to allow some wiggle room. And so our discussions, when we bring the regulations forward, a lot of times will revolve around that. As a general rule, we like to think about having the least amount of rules to get the job done. As part of the research and reconnaissance, we've talked to code users, so with staff, the advisory committee, other people who are familiar with your code, maybe have gone through the process. And a summary of those comments are included as Appendix A in your diagnostic memo. The comments aren't direction or something the city has to respond to each individual, you know, comment, because in some cases, they're actually contradictory to each other. People have different opinions. But it gives some good insight and ideas as to what people who have been through your process or familiar with the code see as issues. In a number of cases, there are some commonalities, and so we grouped them into about eight common themes, and making the code easier to use and understand, clarifying the review process, evaluating the review bodies for certain decisions, keeping the eclectic character. There is strong opinion, I think, from most people that to stay away from cookie-cutter design, that eclectic character is really at the core of Moro Bay. Having standards that are tailored, enhancing the downtown, the waterfront, incorporating flexibility, empowering staff to make some decisions, and then rethinking parking requirements. And these comments collectively really kind of mirrored what we found in our assessment. And I've, we've grouped them into about four topic areas, which I'll go through each one of those. So first is the usability of the code itself, and this really was the number-one thing that we heard from code users and what we saw by just opening your code. Overall, the organization is not intuitive. There's a lot of information, but none of it seems to be logically grouped together. People have said they don't know when to stop looking through the code to find the regulations that apply. There's never the sense that, okay, I've got it, I've got that complete list of what I need to do and what is required, that there may be some hidden regulations somewhere, that needle in the haystack that's going to come out at the end of the project that's really going to affect the viability of the project. So overall, the code needs a fresh format and organization so that there's a logical structure, so that a code user, when they look at the first part of the ordinance, knows what they can do with their property, what the rules apply to a certain use or development, and then what the procedures for review and approval are. Improving the appearance of the text, having clear headings, more spacing, consistent indentations also help with the overall usability of the code itself and the navigation. Grouping related content, so where there's regulations that apply to a certain use or a certain development type, those are located in one area. Removing redundancy and duplication that we find throughout can just take down the sheer volume of the code. Providing purpose statements. This is one thing a lot of people said, is if we know the intent of the regulation, that can really help with it, consistent interpretation and implementation, you know, why is this regulation here? And providing that context for the regulations would be helpful. Evaluating your uses, first of all, a lot of your uses within your code don't even have definitions, period. They're not defined, so there's a hard to implement that when you don't know when something is. But as we look at defining the uses, also looking towards more broader categories of uses, so that as there's nuanced uses that come forward, we can fit them into these broader categories, either by a common function, a common characteristic, a common product. So you're not trying to imagine a stationery store, bookstore, drugstore, foodstore, pharmacy, you know, these are all retail uses that we can group together, and that's easier as time goes on and new uses come up, we're better at able to categorize them. And then using plain language, so taking out legalese, confusing language, so on. Also using graphics and illustrations to help in that interpretation, to clarify standards. And then using tables more effectively, as right now, some of your tables, you know, a single column will run on for pages, and that information is really lost. And also providing cross-references to aid in that navigation of where standards are. So the next key component is the implementation of your general plan and your local coastal plan. And as going forward, there will be a number of policies and land use concepts that are directly related to zoning, and making sure that the zoning, then, is updated to very clearly tie to these and provide that implementation. The first piece is the zoning districts, and making sure that the zoning districts, as well as those zoning regulations, tie to the land use designations in the general plan. In some cases, new zones will be necessary, because you're really looking at a different vision for areas or more nuanced areas, particularly your mixed-use areas, which you do have some mixed-use districts currently, but in the general plan is you're looking at the different characteristics of these areas or adjusting the district standards. We want to make sure that those standards reflect that vision in the general plan. We also look at existing zones. Are there some that are no longer necessary, or, you know, are they obsolete? Again, the same thing with having the least amount of rules to get the job done. We also like to have the least amount of districts as well, and that helps with the streamlining. Of course, where there's nuances, we do have individual districts, but making sure that they're purposeful. And that's both with the zoning districts as well as the overlay districts, evaluating each one of those that you have currently for their, you know, whether they're necessary and effective, and then if there's any new ones needed to implement concepts in your general plan. Then the other piece is the development standards. And so, the nature of development or moving forward, the type of development you'll see has really changed since your last general plan, in particular, your last zoning code, as you're looking at a fairly built-out community and looking at a lot more infill development and some more attention paid on to mixed-use and some pedestrian-oriented areas, have some different development standards, and making sure that we have the appropriate ones in there. And some of the things that typically in past zoning codes haven't been considered are things such as transparency, entryways, the facade design and articulation, so how the building relates to the street. These are a lot of more developed concepts than what were when your zoning code was updated before. So we'll be looking at incorporating these in districts, and then also focusing on infill and compatibility as well. And through the general plan update, as it's happened, you know, so far, the community has expressed a desire to remain a small kind of oceanfront town, and change is inevitable, and change will occur over time. And one way to help retain existing characters is through the reuse of existing buildings and site development. However, sometimes regulations can actually encourage the opposite. They can encourage tearing down and rebuilding in order to bring it into conformance. So if there isn't flexibility for adaptive reuse to make that possible, sometimes it kind of has that opposite effect, particularly in non-conforming situations, so where an alteration or an addition may require bringing the entire site into conformance with the code. And in some cases, you may want this. So say you had a salvage yard in the middle of your downtown, and you're really looking to, you know, have that move out and have something else come in. But in some cases, there may be a non-conforming that's benign or actually fits in or adds to that character of the neighborhood, you know? Say you had an old fishing shack that is non-conforming to setbacks, and the building's not usable in the current state, so they want to add on. Well, maybe you have provisions for, to allow some appropriate additions or expansions and maintain that non-conformity, because it's already kind of a fabric of the neighborhood or the community. Again, getting to that eclectic feeling of Moro Bay and the funkiness. So there's two things moving forward that we consider. One, avoiding creating non-conformities where we don't want to conform them. We always are, we pay attention to that. And then allowing flexibility for appropriate additions and expansions where there are non-conforming situations. The other piece is parking requirements also have a large influence on the ability to use a property, particularly in built-up areas where a property may be underutilized, but you can't change the use because it's, you can't meet the parking requirements. And so through the update, the city can look at a number of ways of providing flexibility for parking, whether it's overall reducing parking requirements, reducing requirements for, in certain areas or certain uses, allowing parking reductions, or recognizing existing non-conforming parking and kind of giving credits for that and allowing, only requiring for parking for new demand of parking. So there's a number of things that we'll be looking forward to, just keeping in the back of our minds, making it possible to kind of support adaptive reuse. back of, back of our minds, making it possible to kind of support adaptive reuse. And then the third issue was the review procedures. And review procedures really set out that procedural environment for the city to achieve its goals. And the depiction on the slide is really how some people view the current review process. It's, causes frustration, anxiety, distrust when there's an idea of not knowing what that process is. And I would say that's on both sides, both somebody who is applying for something, but also somebody in the community who just might be interested in what's happening and what the process is. So if the review process is clear to what the process is, the timeline, the review authority, the opportunity for public input can, one, promote good development and then just trust in the process in general. So some things I'm looking at is streamlining the development review procedures. And this doesn't mean saying yes to everything. That's not the type of streamlining we're talking about. It's a clear path and meaningful input into the review process. The decision gets made as the decision gets made, but everyone knows what that process is that it's going through. Also looking at if there's opportunities to adjust review thresholds. Can more things that the city regularly says yes to or regularly applies the same kind of conditions to, can those be built into the code and then lower the review threshold for that? We're also thinking about, we're also incorporating or adjusting development standards in the code. So with these better standards, there may be also other opportunities for reducing the review thresholds for certain types of uses or development. Then overall, again, providing that clear review process and looking at where there's flexibility for certain situations where, again, as we're, you're looking at more infill type development, things just generally aren't as straightforward as if you had large parcels with nothing on them. And then finally, compliance with state and federal law. So there's a number of state and federal laws that preempt local regulations, and you'll need, will need to fit in with those. And Commissioner Teft, as you recognized when we went to the General Plan Advisory Council, this also should include mobile home parks and the RV parks as well, which have some state and federal laws. But, so there may be some things coming forward that we're just offering, you know, this is per state and federal law, and the city doesn't have, you know, where you can and where you cannot adjust things related to those. So that's an overview of, you know, again, what we've recognized through our first kind of reconnaissance of it, those kind of big-picture issues and that we see, and then the recommendations of what we'll be paying attention to in moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for staff at this point? Jerry?
It seems like this document so far is a basically guideline and just more of a sales brochure. Is there real, I'm doming that on a diminutive term, but when do we get into the meat of the draft of these proposals?
So we'll start, and we're working out an outline, working outline with staff. Once we get that framework set, we'll start with the drafting of the regulations. The administrative provisions, I believe, are set to go to the General Plan Advisory Committee in July.
Okay.
So we're starting?
Yeah.
Eat your Wheaties.
Yeah.
This, this question is maybe more for Scott. In your experience, the adoptive reuse opportunities, have you experienced those kinds of things being thwarted or obstacles or, you know, going the wrong way or anything like that?
We have policies right now that, that sort of hinder the ability to reuse existing buildings. We've, you know, we've altered our zoning code to allow reuse of buildings in the North Main Street area without requirement for parking, so any use can go in there. So you could be a barber shop one day and a restaurant the next, and the restaurant might be more intense, but no additional parking required, you can go in there. That's so you don't have vacant storefronts, and you have policies like that. That issue is also one that's affecting our downtown and the ability to reuse space there. And so sometimes we have to get kind of creative. It'd be nice if our zoning code picked that up, acknowledged it, and said, yeah, we would like to have our storefronts in our stores, in our leased spaces in our downtown full, as opposed to not. And so that's, that's kind of where we're trying to go with it, is say, hey, you can use the existing facilities that we have, and that's a good thing. We'd like to, we'd like to continue to do that. And then you have encouragements in there for upgrading those buildings and things like that, so.
Good, because I wasn't suggesting that those kinds of provisions were unnecessary, but I was, over this last year, when I've been sitting on this commission, I was left with the impression that in our own informal ways, we've sometimes been able to muddle through and, and accomplish adoptive reuse and not let it go the wrong way.
We have, it takes creative thinking.
Right.
And a use of the gray areas of the code. I'd rather have language spelled out in there that says, this is what we're supposed to do when those scenarios come up, because it's, it's really not straightforward for the public, they, you know, if you don't have it written down. So, and I think those are, those are policies, one, you want to vet to make sure that's a community desire, reuse of our existing commercial spaces. And, and then you want to have it written down so people can find it if they're looking to do something along those lines, and otherwise they can't, so they have to come and talk to us, and then we have to try to work it out, so.
You mentioned a couple of things. Streamlining development procedures, so certain conditions that are, you said, maybe like cookie cutter conditions that you wouldn't have to go to review process is, how does that correlate with, you know, Coastal Commission and the law?
I'll give you a great example. A conversation that we had before we came to this meeting today was in relationship to when development happens on the waterfront or over the water. Oftentimes, we're required to do mitigated negative declarations down there, and we apply the same mitigation measures to every project. What's the point of that? You know, I mean, we still, we still would always require the studies to make sure that we're, have the correct mitigations, but instead of doing an MND every time, so it's a longer process, we can incorporate those into the zoning code as BMPs, best management practices. And so unless something comes, unless a project comes up and has a unique issue, then it's covered underneath there, and you don't have to do the MND. Because it's kind of ridiculous that we write the same conditions over and over again into these, these mitigation measures into these documents. And we don't ever get new ones, they're always the same. So we're probably going to look to incorporate that into, into them. And then we, I've talked to the Coastal Commission about it, and they're like, that's, that's the way other jurisdictions are looking at some of these things to help streamline, again, streamline the process. And also to give clear direction as to what the process is. You know, as Martha alluded to earlier, you're never quite sure. I mean, just think about the item that was here before you this evening. We went through a process and required a conditional use permit with the concurrence of the Coastal Commission. We thought we had everything kind of figured out. We're like, yep, it's a CUP. We went and talked to Coastal, you think it's a CUP? They're like, yep, it's a CUP. We brought it here, you approved the CUP. And then we got a complaint, Coastal Commission looked at it again, Coastal Commission staff and said, hmm, probably needs a CDP. That needs to be spelled out in the code. There's no reason we had to have that happen. I mean, to have coup hearings on the same project is kind of ridiculous. You would think our policies would be written better. Well, this is our opportunity to do that.
Thank you for that. And then the other, well, that's getting into discussion.
No, it's okay. Yeah. I'm going to hold my questions till, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm going to hold my questions till later, but I think Jerry has another.
Yeah. This may be in the next chapter, but we have a recurring problem of, say, North Morro Bay, you know, that district, that zone, where there's mixed-use, there's commercial, and there's residential. And some of the lots are being developed residential, some of them are to be, being developed commercial. How, we're seeing one of these projects coming for us tonight. How do we determine in, in this document, what is the optimum ratio between mixed-use, residential, and commercial? That would, that would be the appropriate, you know, mix so that we get the optimum viability of these areas? Because, you know, right now, we don't, we're looking at specific projects in a, in a district or in a zone, and we can't say that, no, this is not, this is not a good use for the zone, it's a good use for the site, but it's not a good use for the zone or the district. So where do we get that insight, or where do we get that, that ability to, to say that this is right and this isn't right?
Well, the first part in addressing that is in the general plan and identifying, you know, in the land use designation and the policies for that area, what the vision is. And in our, forming that vision, you also want to think about, you know, what's feasible given the kind of market demands, the existing development, the existing parcel size, and so on. So that would be the place to, you know, again, set out the, the vision. And then the zoning would articulate the, you know, specific types of uses or whether a certain use, it can be standalone or where, if anywhere mixed use is required, you know, maybe you talk about, you know, in the general plan policies, what's envisioned for, you know, the nature of parking, and then the zoning, you know, follows up and implements that. As far as a, you know, a certain, you know, the optimal land use mix, you know, that's hard to identify because that changes over time too, as well. And while, I think in the general plan, the overall vision, you could talk in that whole area about generally what that, you know, the balance is, but on a parcel-by-parcel basis, particularly since you have such small parcels, you know, that's hard to achieve, you know, or to prescribe or dictate, I would say.
To some extent, it seems like the market is going to have to determine that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's also going to be, you know, the market is going to follow where, you know, what the zoning or what the regulations say, you know, per se. So like, like downtown, do we, do we try to keep, maybe this isn't the proper place for this, but do we try to keep, you know, in the downtown area, do we create a dumbbell-type retail establishment with, with more residential in the middle? Is that more viable than, than creating all of Harbor or all of Main Street there? Not Main Street, but Morro Bay Boulevard as full commercial all the way down? You know, right now, it's not, you know, it's not supporting commercial all the way down. You know, and the same thing with North Morro Bay. It's not, you know, economically, it's not supporting that. So where do we get the wisdom from to say which is more important than the other?
Well, we probably need to recognize, one, the development pattern that's taken place to this point, because we have several new structures that are built right along Main Street that are residential. You probably don't want to put a blanket statement in there that it all needs to be commercial and make those non-conforming. And also doesn't make sense because of, as Martha indicated, those lots, many of them are very, are pretty small. So what kind of commercial are you going to put on them? And you go, and you only go one lot deep in some of those instances, so you can't even put some of them together to make anything, you know, that's really big enough to be a viable commercial use. So it's probably okay that some of those scenario, some of those situations end up being, being residential. Some of the other areas, maybe it is possible to, you know, to put some of the properties together to do something that's a little more viable or a little more unique. I mean, it's one of the areas that we haven't had, you know, much investment in. And so you have a, you have commercial buildings there that are underutilized or not always in the greatest shape because they've, you know, they date back to the 40s and 50s, some of them, and just haven't really been maintained. And so coming up with policies to encourage redevelopment of those things and, and then making the projects so they can be viable, so they can be mixed-use, so you can have residential above them or behind them or something like that, that makes the project to redevelop those sites, again, viable. Those are probably things we want to look to.
Yeah.
What is, in this, in this discussion, are we going to be lacing in anything with cell towers?
Yes, there'll be, I mean, zoning is where we're going to regulate, yes, wireless facilities.
Okay, so, but this is, this is higher level than that. We're going to be?
Well, we're not, we're not, we're not, you don't have the policy in front of you what that looks like. It is, you know, it is one of the things that will be included in here.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we don't currently have a policy really that deals with them.
Right.
And, you know, it'll have to be something that's consistent with state law and recent court cases, so.
Yeah.
It's going to be interesting. Interesting, I mean, I've had recent conversations with the city attorney's office about it, so it's sort of ever-evolving.
Okay.
I'm glad you bring that up because with respect to telecommunications, there was one term I, I didn't understand in this, in this memo, the paragraph on page 27, telecommunications, where it talks about co-location facilities. What, my question is, what exactly is a co-location facility?
Multiple carriers on one site.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah. All right, thank you.
So if there are no other questions for staff, this is a new business item. It's not a public hearing item, but as usual, the planning commission appreciates the wisdom of the public, so I'm going to take this opportunity to open it up for public comment. Anyone who would like to speak to these, to this design memo, please come forward. We'd love to hear from you.
Just a little motormouth tonight, Betty Winholz. I'm going to object, as I have in the past, to doing zoning or rewrite simultaneously with the general plan. I'm going to disagree with the consultant. I think you can't do your zoning until you know where your general plan is. So I don't know how you do that simultaneously. I see that you're looking at the big picture, and you're trying to develop new categories, maybe, in terms of how it's going to be laid out, so I can see how the format could maybe be developed. But in terms of the content, that makes me real nervous. And so I am, I'm just saying, I'm expressing that caution to you, that I don't know how you can fulfill the general plan if you haven't approved the general plan yet and therefore taken steps to implement it through the zoning ordinance. I don't also know that I agree necessarily that the least rules is the best rules. It seems like we may need to make sure that all bases are covered, and so however many rules that takes, that's how many we write. And I also am curious to know, and it sounds like the zoning is kind of like the general plan, our general plan is not an update, it's a complete rewrite. And it sounds to me like maybe zoning's going the same way, and maybe you could confirm that for me, that this is not an update of our zoning ordinance, it's actually a complete rewrite of our zoning ordinance. And, and when, when that happens, I feel like what's good about our two documents is going to get thrown out because it's not being looked at and kept. And with regard to your section on flexibility versus certainty, for me, it's not about flexibility, it's about consistency. And I like that word better than flexibility or certainty. It seems to me, and what I've heard people say in the past, is I don't mind building in a Tascadero because I know I have to do this, 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 and this, and these are the rules to the box. But you come to Morro Bay, and there may be a box and there may not be a box, or you can go to this commission and you can get these exceptions made and this and that. So it's, it seems to me we need to be very clear on, on what our consistency is. So neighbors, as well as the developer, have the same story, and nobody needs to be surprised. And, and that's what I'd like to see. And it seems to me the, the biggest issue with a lot of development is always about the parking. And I get what you're saying, when you change uses, then you may have to change how the parking works, but cars aren't getting smaller. I wish they were, but they're not, and I know that reducing the size of a parking space isn't necessarily a good thing because vehicles aren't getting smaller. So that whole parking thing, I think, is still a curmudgeon and still needs to be looked at, and I hope you'll take a really close eye to that when it comes before you. And I'm surprised that you don't have to respond to the public comments. I would think this document has a SEQA review, and don't you have to respond to all comments in a SEQA review? And so maybe that comes later and not now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak this evening?
I just have a question. My name's Diane. I live in North Morro Bay, and I'm, just have a question because I'm not real savvy on what's, you know, how this all works and everything. But as far as the zoning for our city... But as far as the zoning for our city, I'm just curious why we have to hire out someone to do our zoning. If we already have a simple zoning thing, you know, written up, why can't we just redo that ourself with our staff that we're paying instead of having to go out and get someone else to do that? So it's just, you know, I'm, I'm just curious, you know, we're a small town, we're on a budget. I'm just curious why that is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close public comment, bring it back to the commission. I'm, I'm sorry, did we get your, I don't think we got your name.
Diane.
Diane. Last name?
Ryan.
Okay, good. Okay, for the record. Yeah. I guess I can speak to your question a little bit. Having, having had the opportunity, having had the, the great pleasure of using our current zoning ordinance for the past four or five years, the, it's a, it is a, it is a massive, you know, repairing this ordinance is a, is a massive task. There are multiple contradictions within the zoning ordinance. Sometimes the zoning ordinance contradicts the general plan. So, so bringing this all into a coherent whole is a huge job. And if staff were to undertake this themselves, the, the only way that that could happen, I think, would we just say, we're not going to process any more permits for the next two years. We're just, that's it. No, don't bother applying because we got no personnel to do it. So I really think it's, it's a manpower issue and it relates to the size of the job versus the size of the department. And you can correct me if that's not the case.
It's absolutely correct. We don't, given the amount of work that we have undertaken to this point and we have going through the, the department, we don't have the capacity to take it on. We would have to hire more people. So if you can hire a consultant, you only have them on payroll for a little while and then you're done with the project when you're done and you don't have to get rid of folks and that type of thing. I mean, that's kind of how it works.
Yeah.
And they have, and they have particular expertise in doing this. Certainly have worked on updating many sections of zoning codes over the years, but I've never done an entire rewrite of one myself. Same for the general plan. I've updated several sections of general plans, but, of a general plan, but never done an entire rewrite of one.
And, you know, and also part of the issue has to do with, you know, the, these folks have a lot of expertise in being able to obtain appropriate community input, which is an important part of this process. And, you know, they, they've been down this road before. They, they know how to organize the meetings, they know how to get the surveys out, and that's, that's, that's a very valuable part of the process.
And one of the points that was brought up too, that I agree with is they, you know, their CV is they've done several of these for different communities over a period of time. So it's, it would be kind of like going to your dental hy- per se, going to your dental hygienist and saying, you know, do a root canal for me. There's particular expertise that you go to, that you, that you want to have, you know, on staff or on, on call.
So then I guess we can dig into this. Well, maybe, can I say one thing? Scott, regarding the public comment in the SEQA document, is this a valid concern?
It's a good thing to circle back to. So, yeah, we are going to, these, this process is going to involve an EIR. And so there'll be the opportunity to comment on the EIR once it's, it's prepared. We're probably going to start it later this summer. And so we'll have a scoping sessions and those types of things, standard process that you go through for an EIR. So, and then we'll be answering any comments that come into the EIR, you know, as we, when we release it. So that's, that's the environmental process that goes along with this. Other than that, we take input from the public that helps inform this, this process and we have from the very beginning. We, we have a whole committee that's, you know, designated just to deal with the update of the general plan and the LCP and zoning code, so GPAC. So we get lots of input and we have had many workshops and, and many stakeholder meetings and all of those types of things that you would normally see in association with an endeavor like this.
So just so for clarity, yeah, we're, some of the questions that were brought up are going to be laced in to the EIR later and responded to, yeah?
It's a requirement.
Okay. And then the other, the other, I think was a valid point was, can you maybe give me your take or either one of you's on your take on running these in parallel? The general plan, because it, there is, you know, there is that general plan, the chicken and the egg kind of thing, you know?
It's a fair question, looking at it from the outside. It's, we didn't start zoning until we pretty much completed the land use component of the general plan. You need to have that done. That tells you what the land use is going to be. We've gotten all the input as it, we've gotten a bunch of the input as it relates to the land uses and what people want to see where. And we have a pretty good starting point to kick off zoning, which is why we've kicked it off at this point. The idea is it going to be a complete rewrite? We're going to entirely redo the format of the zoning code. Yep. Are we going to have many of the same policies and standards in there? Sure, absolutely. Otherwise, we'd be making a whole bunch of development that we have in the, in the city non-conforming. I don't even want to do that. So we're going to use a bunch of what's in there, that we're going to use the good stuff, right? We're going to put it in a better format. We're going to cross-reference it so it's no surprises in there. And, and when we come out the other end, we're going to have a modern zoning code that's, that's much easier to use and I think much better, you know, reflective of what the community expects as it relates to development projects that are processed through here.
And then one more thing, Scott, and I brought this up when we had the joint meeting with the city council and all, and it was when Michael Baker was here. The, we have to be careful when we're looking at these things that weren't, you know, we're, you know, we talk about, oh, population, 12,000, no problem, blah, blah, blah. But there's pockets in our city that are, that infrastructure needs, needs, is already over capacity, okay, already. And this is by staff's, public work staff's data, okay, using their data. Are we going to be addressing and lacing that discussion in when we address some of these zoning? Because we're talking, okay, this zoning, maybe we go mixed use, maybe high, more, more high density, but we, we don't want to be subsidized.
From the standpoint of, you know, how we deal with infrastructure and capacity issues and so forth, that, that's water and wastewater master plan type processes, that's the one water plan. It's, it's those types of things where you pick up a lot of that information. That information will be pushed back through the general plan update as, as background documentation. Has to be.
Okay.
Well, you, you've got the microphone. Why don't you just go ahead and dig in and give us your comments?
We're projecting population and build out and all of those types of things. I mean, I all know that really can't have annexations without going through a vote of the people, so, you know, somewhat limited there.
Yeah. What might, yeah, so my, my concern is this, is that we already have certain areas, okay, in the city that are overburdened, okay? We've expanded state parks, right? And these things have an accumulative impact on our infrastructure. And now we're looking at, you know, I'm, I'm trying to get a bird's eye view here and say, okay, we're looking at the city here and here and certain areas, maybe not so much, but certain other areas, we're already over things. So how do we, how do we lace that into discussion, bring in public work, say, look, if we're going to zone this, like, let's say, more high, high density, we have to make sure that whoever is planning on doing anything there, that the citizens aren't subsidizing a development because the infrastructure is going to have to be increased or...
Public Works Department is dialed into all of this, as is the consultants that are associated with it. We, we can't do, we can't do projections for what things are going to be in the future, meaning what is our need from a wastewater treatment standpoint? What is a need from a water demand standpoint without looking at projections and without talking with one another to get that happen? We have to do that because, and they're relying on this, the general plan and LCP process, and we're relying on them for some of the background material to substantiate what that's going to look like. So it's, it's conversations that we've been having on an ongoing basis since we started this process.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Keep going. Okay. Jerry?
Are we going to get, are we going to go through the meat of this? Are we going to get another presentation on the next section or how are we going to handle our next comments?
I, I think we should go through the meat of it, yeah.
Okay. Basically, page one, I'm concerned about the word, use of the word "modern." It, I've seen a lot of advertisements for something that's modern that was advertised in 1890. So maybe a different term could be used for that because our, our present code is a modern code, but it was done 40 years ago. So just, that always throws a red flag up. The dilemma, you know, page number four, the dilemma between flexibility and certainty. This was brought up by one of the, one of the speakers. This is a real, this is real critical to me because for one thing, times change, new designs should be implemented, new designs should be looked at. We need different, you know, we're going through, you know, climate change and we're also going through economic change and population change. So we're going to need to be flexible enough to address those, what, what our, what our goals are going to be in new building designs and new land use designs. And all of that ties into what, what would be the best environmentally appropriate projects. So, so, you know, this is, you know, this is where I'm, you know, this is that conundrum there where we have, you know, how do we lock in the ability to say this doesn't meet our goals? But then also somebody, to have somebody come forward with a project that doesn't fit the present standards but allows us to, to accept it because it's a better solution that we hadn't thought of before. You know, on the contrary side of that is one of the problems that's, that has happened in Morro Bay through the years was, I'm going to get myself in trouble here, but it was more dependent on who you knew than, than what you knew and how, how good the solution was. And so we need to have the code be able to treat everybody fairly, but to be open for innovative solutions in changing times. So, you know, if, if you can split that baby, you know, I give you, but that, you know, give you a great credence to that. But that is one of the biggest problems that I see with the update of the code. And, okay. You know, as far as, you know, if we're looking at like page nine, the formatting of the code, I think is, there's several different ways you can do it. And I think it's more important that you just, we're consistent with it throughout both the LCP, the GP and, and the, and the zoning, that we're, that those documents can interrelate and tie, tie back to each other and then also with our design guidelines and the appendage documents that we're going to produce. And one of the things I think is going to be, you know, important is to be able to create the design guidelines for specific areas that are codified and need to, you know, that are, you know, legal, but also can be changed and adapted as the times change without having, going back to the coastal commission. So how do we tie, you know, one important question is how do we tie in design guidelines to this project that we can change and adapt as the conditions change without having to go back to the coastal commission and redoing the whole pro, the whole document? So that's a big concern I have. And then also having the clarity of the design guidelines so that, you know, we, I think we did an adequate job, you know, on the residential design guidelines, but now we need to do that same, at least to that level for the commercial and the mixed use and for the different zones. And I think we need to, to run those to, to correlate the individual zones and uses rather than having an, just an overall, you know, design guideline that fits to each, fits to the whole citywide. You know, some of the things that we need to define, okay, I'm at page 12, is some of the definitions that we're going to need. This says, lack of clear definition rules a measurement. This is really apparent when you start using this code to, to design projects, and I've done a few of those. We don't even have a basic definition of a living area. You know, what, what we term living area? Are the walls, is it to the inside of the walls, to the outside of the walls? Is it heated spaces? Is it, does a, does an area under a stairway, is that counted as living area or is that, if it's multiple stairs, is it counted multiple times or only, only once? What is a basement? You know, is a basement living area or is it not a living area? And then what is a living area? You know, we need to define what lot coverage is. You know, is lot coverage, does it include, you know, does it include a deck over 28 inches high or 30 inches high? What if the deck's on a sloping lot and it goes from zero to four feet or something? Where's, where's the lot coverage on that? We, you know, also, do we want to encourage porches? Do we count those as, as lot, as lot coverage or do we, do we, and then do we allow them into setbacks or, or not? So what is our, you know, defining those terms, I think, is really critical to make this code much more usable than it is now. You know, measuring heights, you know, what are the appendages that we can allow? You know, at one point, we allowed, you know, we allowed decks into the side setbacks, you know, as an appendage. You know, I'm not, you know, do we allow them now if they're over, if they're over eight feet off of the ground? Are they allowable if they're, or not? You know, so there's, there's rule, you know, we need to define those terms and the, the parameters of what, what really works for a building. What, what can, what can exceed the height limitations? You know, right now, we allow certain appendages to exceed the height limitations. If somebody's at their height limit, do we allow them to put solar panels on, on the roof? You know, by state law, we cannot stop them from putting solar panels on, but by state law, we're allowed to have a height limit. So where does, you know, where do we fit in? At one point, people were putting on windmills, you know, you know, wind generating, you know, windmills and they were adding them all over town. They didn't work very well here, but they were adding them. So are those allowed? What is, what is included in the height limitations and what aren't, I think is really critical. I think we need to add on 17, page 17, on the, the list on the form on the bottom, is sustainable design features, I think is, we need to add that to our development standards. They're going to be, you know, according to Title 22, more and more are going to be required, essentially in the next few years, it's all, you know, most projects are going to be required to be net zero, new projects. But we need to have this stated in our, what we're requiring above and beyond. But we need to have this stated in our, what we're requiring above and beyond the, the basic building code standards. And on the next page down, we're talking about, about code details. And we, you know, once again, I'm, I'm really big on design standards for easy use and also consistency throughout the, from, from project to project. And other than that, I think you, I think you got a pretty good, a pretty good start on it. So.
Joe. Well, I likewise think that this memorandum is, is really well organized and comprehensive. It is a fairly general document, and it's always, you know, God or the devil's going to be in the, in the details. And, you know, whatever abilities I have are really of kind of an editorial nature. I need to sort of look at specific things and then I can think specifically and, and can do that kind of analysis. So I really don't have much to say about this document. But I mean, there's a few comments I'll, I'll make for what it's worth. And they're, I think they're probably what we're all thinking and fairly obvious. And again, for anyone who's looked at the code, it, it really does need its usability to be improved, particularly cross-referencing. If you have any expectation that you're going to find out everything you need to know about a particular project. And likewise, the purpose statement, so that you know the context. What is this, what is this provision of the code trying to accomplish? Because that can be subject to debate. Because inevitably, the language lends itself to ambiguity. Unless you've got some kind of purpose, you don't know. You know, rethinking the various districts, really important. Particularly as we get more and more involved with increasing density and defining mixed use. You know, these are, are concepts that are the subject of heated debate. And, and we have to be really careful where we locate these sorts of developments. Design standards, absolutely essential. And the more specific, the better. You know, I tend towards, the design standards should be prescriptive rather than suggestions or merely guidelines. But on the other hand, maybe there's some kind of a gradation where, you know, some of the standards are in fact prescriptive. Others are highly recommended. And then perhaps there's a category that perhaps is more optional. You know, I'm, I'm really big in not, you know, reinventing the wheel. So I'd like to see, you know, what other similarly situated communities up and down the coast have done with respect to guidelines and how to impose these guidelines. Both, both the substance of what we want people to do and how insistent are we in getting them to do that? And frankly, I don't know. Maybe, maybe there's, well, all sorts of things come to mind. Point systems or percentage systems, I don't know. But I certainly can imagine situations where, you know, some of the, some of the specific guidelines in a certain category, you know, won't make sense. And, and we, that shouldn't become a controversy. We should be able to resolve that quickly. Certainty versus flexibility, that's, you know, that's right at the core of this. Because we want everybody to know exactly what it is that they need to do. And there are certain situations where that may not be appropriate. But just as true, there are going to be instances where applicants try to squirm out of things that they would otherwise be required to do in the name of flexibility. And again, I'm, I'm going to be really anxious to see how other communities have delved into that and reached some kind of a conclusion. And again, in a very specific, specific way. And, and I, I don't know. I'll be curious to see how that's achieved. And it, it can't be, well, it could be. And that also dovetails nicely with, you know, the discretionary authority, the, the Community Development Office or the, or the, or the Planning Commission. And I'll be also interested in the discussions as to, you know, frankly, does the, does the, does the Planning Commission have too much authority or not enough authority? Should the Development Community Office have more authority? You know, I'd, I'd be sensitive to the fact that this body, because we're, we're five of us in collegial, you know, I've always found that, you know, five brains are better than one. And we're a little bit more immune to community pressures brought from one side or the other. On the other hand, I can recall, you know, instances where, you know, things came before the, the commission that really weren't two cents ago, that they could have been resolved much, in fact, I have personal experience with that, that could have been resolved, you know, at the Community Development Office level. So again, I'm, I'm also, I'm curious, it's really not the appropriate time to answer that, but whether the Development Office is really overburdened with those sort of discretionary issues. Would it, could we as the Planning Commission take on more work in those gray areas or perhaps not? I personally don't feel overwhelmed, so I don't, so, so maybe that's, maybe there's a solution in that. Let's see. And again, returning to this, the, the most important thing to me are these design guidelines and getting people to buy into it and then making sure they're enforced. And, and I'm wondering if there are some sort of, there's a, a point system that, I guess what I'm looking at is ways to objectify guidelines. So that they're not, so that, so they're, they're isolated, insulated from, you know, claims of being capricious and arbitrary. And I, I just don't know what the mechanisms are available. Maybe smarter people than I am have thought them out. What kind of mechanisms are available to help with that? And, you know, one, one last thing is, and I'm not even sure if I can prevent myself from rambling. I, I want to make sure that there are financial incentives incorporated, not finance, not, incentives incorporated into this code to help persuade people to do what they might not otherwise do. You know, and that, that could take a whole, whole gamut of things. But we tend to use the prescriptive notion to just forcing people to do things by force of law. And I'd like us to give an equal or even greater, first of all, we should, we should give thought to how we are going to get applicants to do what it is that we want them to do, encourage them to do it. And rather than by force of law, what are the positive incentives that we can get them to do that? How do we get people to, to propose and be willing to, to do mixed, mixed use projects? Anyway, just incentives, incentives. Those are my, my rambling comments, such as they are.
Yeah. Well, it's hard to get down to nuts and bolts at this stage because we're, we're dealing with concepts. You know, first of all, Martha, I'd like to say thank you for this document. I mean, this is a, this is a lot of work. This is a big document. And for the most part, it's, it's, it's very well done. It's very well done. There are, there are a few things I'd like to bring up that I think may be unique to Morro Bay that perhaps need to be covered a little bit more. And with regard to page 11, lack of purpose statements. I think nowhere is the need for purpose statements more urgent than in the area of neighborhood compatibility. Morro Bay is not monolithic. There are certainly distinct neighborhoods that are different from one another. Distinct residential neighborhoods. And I, I realize this document is, this document is more oriented towards commercial zoning, okay? But I think many residents here are very concerned with residential zoning. And I think that needs to be explored more carefully. I think, I think one of the things that needs to be expressed very explicitly in the new zoning ordinance is what is, what is the neighborhood character of our different neighborhoods here in Morro Bay? What are the essential elements that make that up? Is it the size of houses? Is it the size of lots? Is it the amount of vegetation? Is it the views? I mean, what, what are the essential elements that need to be preserved in order to preserve neighborhood compatibility? And within each of those neighborhoods, we're going to have to look specifically at variations. In other words, the same standards may, within any given neighborhood, the same standards may not apply for level lots versus sloped lots, large lots versus small lots. So, you know, I think that we're going to need to, to deal with those issues in some, in some detail. I think it, I think it would be useful as part of that process to say, not only this is what the character of the neighborhood is, but to identify those trends which are currently or recently active that have tended to reinforce and preserve neighborhood character and therefore should be encouraged, as well as trends which have tended to detract from neighborhood character and therefore might not, should be encouraged, might, might, should be discouraged as, as, you know, as part of the process of getting to specific standards for each one of these areas. Getting to the adaptive, the idea of implementation and adaptive reuse. You know, one of the ways of having both certainty and flexibility is to have an exception, is to have exception processes which are ministerial rather than discretionary. In other words, I mean, just as an example, we have a lot of, a lot of lots in Morro Bay where the side setback is a foot too small on one side and a foot too big on the other side. Okay? Clearly, this is not a function of where the house was built. It's a function of the fact that somebody resurveyed the lot at some point. And in those kind of situations, there should be no reason not to be able to say, if, you know, if this is the situation and you want to do an addition of X amount, you're going to get, you're going to get a minor, a minor variance or whatever we decide to call it. So that people know in advance, they can plan on that. They, all they have to do is come in, fill out the form, and it's, it's a done deal. Okay? There's, there's, there doesn't need to be discretion involved there. The same way with some of the residential parking aspects. I don't, this mentions tandem parking. I don't particularly feel that tandem parking is the best alternative. But it certainly could be set up with a ministerial process for saying, if your house is this size and you've got this, you, you automatically can get a parking exception to provide for that. So, you know, it, it, it provides both the certainty and a degree of flexibility. And I would like to, just, just to comment on our, on our current situation. I, I think we probably see a need for more flexibility than there really is because we're dealing with development standards which are inappropriate in many cases. So we have to be flexible, you know? I think the need for flexibility will be greatly reduced when the development standards are rewritten and are appropriate to the, the different areas. There, you know, when you talk about certainty versus flexibility, the virtues of certainty are fairly obvious. You know, everybody can expect, everyone knows what to expect, you know, when they're designing their project. The question is what, you know, what, what is the virtue of flexibility? Flexibility, for its own sake, doesn't really help us. It doesn't really do anything good for the community. But I think you express it in here. There needs to be flexibility when a project which doesn't exactly meet the design standards does a better job of furthering the goals of the zoning ordinance and the general plan. And I think that needs to be stated, okay? I think that, I think, I think that we need to say, it is the expectation of the city that you will design your project within, within the development guidelines. Unless, unless that's the case. Unless designing it differently, more creatively, is going to be more effective in meeting the general plan goals. And if that's the case, it's incumbent upon you to tell us how that's the case. In other words, explain to us why you're able to achieve something with flexibility that you cannot achieve within the stated design guidelines. In other words, you know, we, we've seen projects come in here over the last few years. And it was pretty obvious that somebody sat down and designed this project and assumed that they did not need to adhere to either the design guidelines or the waterfront master plan. You know, they, they just disregarded what was written there. And, and came in, and the only sort of rationale for why they designed it that way was, well, we wanted to. That's what we want to do. That, I think it needs to be very clear that that is not an appropriate, or that is not an adequate explanation. In other words, yeah, it's great. If you, you know, if, if you have a great idea and you can, and you, and you have, you have a plan that will further the, the goals of the general plan, terrific. We're great to hear it. But you need to, you need to explain why that's the case and why those objectives can't be achieved within, within the development guidelines that are, that are stated. So I think, you know, I think, I think that needs to be made clear early in the process.
Thank you.
Oh, can I, can I say one more sentence? I just want to, I just want to say, to a, to a degree, that addresses Jerry's concerns about, about, about consistency over time. Because yes, you know, what doesn't change is the goals of the general plan. Okay? So as, as long as they're the beacon, as long as they're the guiding light, then you're going to have consistency.
Kind of follow, following up on that, that, that's, and I'm bringing it back to infrastructure. An example would be, my neighbor here who's got, mentions gray water a lot. As with gray water recycling, we've had a project not too distant past that had a, just an excellent drainage plan, for instance, that went through the property and, and was addressing those issues. These are the kind of, these are the kind of practices that will help us with not overburdening our infrastructure when we start looking at that aspect of it, okay? Being, being, being the sewer or water recycling or, or, or things like that. Being, being the sewer or water recycling or things like that. And I kind of following up on like the need for like, we call them special districts or special zones and those kind of areas, there is that diversity in Morro Bay. What works maybe in North Morro Bay might not be appropriate around. The other thing, are you, and I'm not sure if anybody agrees with this, but like looking at like FAR, for instance, the fair, the floor area ratio aspects of things, I don't think you like that.
That's one way of accomplishing a goal, but we haven't, I mean, I can speak for the G-PAC. We haven't gotten there yet because there, because there are many ways of accomplishing that goal.
Right, right.
And we just haven't had that discussion.
Yeah, and, yeah, okay. So that's maybe a little premature at this time, yeah? And the other thing, we talked about neighborhood compatibility, and the other thing that we, at least as a city, need to start looking at for diversity is business-to-business infrastructure, business-to-business locations where we have a, just to give you a small example, there's a business at the old Sun Bulletin building that sells to other businesses, manufacturing, small manufacturing. These are the kind of businesses that employ local, that employ local people and steady jobs other than the service industry with, you know, with restaurants and stuff. But it gives us a little bit more diversity, okay? And I, I would like to see, you know, not have, you know, more, more of that kind of, you know, even in North Morro Bay, you know? Those kind of opportunities that are incentives that would work out. I think that's it.
I'm mulling over, you know, what you were just talking about in terms of the exceptional project that can achieve the goals of the design guidelines in its spirit, but perhaps not in its specifics. But it's, that's, that still gets back to the mechanism for deciding.
Well, that would, that would be discretionary. That would have to come to the planning commission. I mean, I see that as being similar to the greater-than-normal public benefit requirement.
Well, I agree. My, and I agree with that. But my only thought is, we're fortunate that so often we're in unanimity in terms of our decision-making. But I, but I wonder in a scenario where opinions would be more divided, you know, that would, if we create a really powerful exception that really depends on a vote, and then the vote, you know, is closed, then I don't know if that works as well.
Democracy can be messy.
Yeah, it's kind of sort of like the Supreme Court deciding on what the law, what the Constitution means when only five guys decide.
I cannot, I can't help but comment on one specific, kind of specific item, because you put it in, okay? You put it in on page 19. The whole idea of flexibility in parking requirements, okay? It is craziness. It is craziness to require onsite parking in pedestrian areas like downtown and on the Embarcadero. The only way, the only way to have coordinated, efficient use of parking in those areas is shared parking through a parking district, okay? I mean, think about it. Right now, right now, we have private lots on, private parking on every lot. So if I want to go to Bank of America and then down the block to Mills, I have to park at the Bank of America lot, but then it's not really fair to that business for me to stay there while I go to Mills. So I have to pull out, drive one block, park in, you know? It just, it's crazy, you know? The whole idea of onsite parking in those dense pedestrian-oriented areas just does not make any sense. And the thing that makes the least sense of all is the idea of historic parking credits. Really, you can have two identical buildings right next to one another, okay? One of them, and in both situations, people want to open restaurants, and one has to provide 14 parking spaces and the other one has to provide none because of uses that occurred 60 years ago. How does that make sense? It's unfair. It's uneconomical. It's illogical, you know? So what we need to do is to look at those areas that are auto-oriented and those areas that are pedestrian-oriented and bring in appropriate regulations for each one. I mean, there are exceptions, even in the downtown area and on the Embarcadero, lodging and residential uses probably would require some onsite parking. That, you know, that's, those are the exceptions. But other than that, it makes, it makes sense for people to park once and go to three or four stores rather than to pump carbon monoxide into the atmosphere driving from one private little parking lot to another one.
And back to this certainty against flexibility, too. I would like to see, if we can develop the design guidelines to a standard where, where they're easy to, to read and to be, to be adhered to, then that gives the developers a chance to fast-track their project. If, say you have a, you know, say you're wanting to put a hotel on Main Street. If we have the design guidelines set and the standards set, guidelines or standards, however you want to say that, that they've checked all the boxes, they've created a project that fits all of the goals for the city and the, you know, the, that we're proposing in these documents, then why should they have to come before the planning commission and go through that, that review? Just to say, okay, you did a good job. Those projects should be able to be approved at the administrative level. And that would be the incentive for the developers to adhere to the design standards. And that would be the carrot that would, would allow, you know, would allow them to say, okay, yeah, I'll, I'll make some sacrifices, but I'm going to save a year time in the development process so I can get it built. And then also all of the uncertainty about, well, I may not get that exemption. So I think if we can, if we can allow a fast-track path, then I think we'll get the, you know, we'll get the acceptance of these design guidelines or standards, universal.
So I do want to clarify that. The zoning code update is not, does not include the development of design guidelines. Just what will be in there is development standards, which in some cases will relate to design. But what will be in the code is the must-do, you know, the numbers that you need to meet, the shalls, not the guidelines. And, you know, Commissioner, tough mention about, you know, the different character in the different residential neighborhoods and how this seemed more geared towards commercial and other areas. And part of that is because some of your more neighborhood or your single-family residential, those are really areas that have not a lot of change of stability, and it's hard to go in, particularly in built-out areas, and change the standards, right? Because while maybe, you know, it might seem like a lot of the houses in a certain neighborhood were built to a certain set of standards, some others that came in, you know, now meet these new ones. And again, we're paying attention to where we're creating non-conformity because it's a real tough thing to tell somebody their house is now non-conforming because you maybe want to get back to a previously established character. So a lot of times, those character, those essential character elements are better addressed in a design guideline format unless you have things that are kind of reflective of current development trends. So in some places we've been having, some communities have been having concerns with the apparent bulk and mass of structures. And part of what they're seeing is the design of houses is coming in with these large entryways, you know, grand, you know, two-story entryways that really make the house seem like McMansion type. But, so we can include standards then where we lower the, you know, first-floor plate height or the, lower the height of entrance. So where there's a trend happening, where we can address it through standards, it's appropriate. But there are a lot of particularly in residential and single-family neighborhoods that are more of this design character. So we pay attention to that also, again, with the, you know, careful not having too many standards, particularly in your residential areas where some of these parcels are fairly small. And so just by nature of defining that box, you know, everything is, you know, starts to look the same. And then I just wanted to point on the incentives to persuade people to do, you know, you know, a better project. Incentives are hard because you have to then identify what you're, what mediocre project you're willing to accept. And really, the most effective incentive that you can have in order for them, for people to build what you want to see is to make it pencil out. You know, a lot of, if it's financially feasible, if it provides that return, and it's what the city wants, somebody will do that. So number one, the biggest incentive is to make something feasible. And that's really what we look at first. Of course, there may be certain situations where, okay, here's what, you know, the standards are. If you provided something else, then you could, you know, get something. But those are really delicate, you know, hard to, you know, tease out. And I think they're a little bit more, they tend to be a more on the specific case than a wholesale incentive-type zoning. But we do pay attention to that, and you're absolutely right about the flexibility, having that flexibility where it's defined, what that flexibility is or what the case in point, you know, where that flexibility can be provided. And then there may be some opportunities where, sure, if you provide a better project altogether, you can show that it's better than the alternative, then it could be, there's a process to approve it as well.
But I have to disagree with you. I'm sorry, okay? The, if you, if you look at the general plan specifically, what it says is that new development should be compatible with the existing neighborhood in size, bulk, and scale. Those are items for the zoning code. It doesn't say architectural design, doesn't say color, and I don't, and I agree, those sort of issues are probably better dealt with in design guidelines. But when you talk about size, bulk, and scale, that's a whole different deal. Those are, those are, those are numbers, okay? And those belong in the zoning code. And as far as, you know, making houses inconsistent that used to be consistent, there are an awful lot of examples out there, probably the majority of examples, where people have looked at this and said, I need to be compatible with the neighborhood in size, bulk, and scale. And they have done it, okay? The only houses that would be made inconsistent, it would be where developers have ignored these requirements of the general plan. So I don't feel terribly guilty about that.
I want to kind of comment on something that you mentioned, like trends. When you look at trends and neighborhood character, one of the things that changes a neighborhood character a lot is vacation rentals. Now, you get a certain area with, like in North Morro Bay, there's areas that changes the character when you have a numerous amount of vacation rentals. And it appears, it almost changes the zoning from residential to commercial because now your, your traffic and your, your, well, your whole, you know, your infrastructure changes, your demands change, you got your parking. I mean, there's houses there that have, all of a sudden, there's 12 cars show up, you know what I mean? So the thing is, is those are the kind of things that will influence a certain character. So I think like when you look at vacation rentals and looking at, there's trends, there are the trends, too, you know? People buy these properties and they, you know, they, there's less wear and tear, you know? I understand that. However, people that live here, day in, day out, and trying to make, you know, trying to keep, keep a certain neighborhood compatibility and character, that plays, you know, that plays a big part of it, and it should be laced, laced into this, the code. And it's, that's why it's like, it's very integrated, you know? When you look at general plan and then, you know, and then all of a sudden you have to look at traffic and all that. So just something to be careful of, yeah?
Another reason why this belongs in the zoning ordinance is that certain, certain aspects of community character, in fact, are public improvements, okay? I mean, one of the, one of the essential characteristics of the neighborhood that I live in is that the streets are narrow, they're kind of bumpy, people, there aren't any sidewalks, people walk in the street, people drive slow, you know? That, that is an essential element of the character of that community. And that certainly doesn't, doesn't belong in design guidelines. It belongs in probably the circulation element of the general plan. But, you know, it's, it needs to be, it needs to be dealt with in audit format, not in Well, let's open it up for one last round of comments, if anyone has any further. If not, then, that, do you have what you need to take forward? So I assume that, I assume that, just kind of where we go from here, I assume that this, that the, that the, I assume that the diagnosis memo will probably go ahead to city council without revision, but with our comments attached, is that sort of the way it's going to?
Still working on a way through that, but yeah, I mean, it, potentially.
Yeah, it kind of makes sense to get everybody's thoughts before you start re-typing stuff, you know? Okay. So then, it's eight o'clock, 8:05. I'm going to suggest maybe a 10-minute recess before we move on to item number C2. So we will reconvene at 17 after. Good evening, and we are back, moving on to new business item number C2. This is case number CP0-540 involving a project at 2130 and 2170 Main Street in North Morro Bay. This is a, this is sort of a new thing that we're doing, which is to get a chance to look at projects before they come for us, before us for a formal review and provide comments and input to the potential owners. And I think it's a, I think it's a great new idea. I think it's something that we should, that we should do regularly. And our staff And our staff report this evening on this item will be presented by the learned Whitney McElvein.
That was a very nice introduction. Thank you so much. Okay, so moving right along here, as we have done before, certain projects that are maybe of a certain scope or just because of the complexity and expense involved with their actual development, staff and the applicants have agreed that conceptual review in this case, as in some others, would allow the planning commission to provide input and direction ahead of a complete application. This project will require approval of a conditional use permit, a coastal development permit, and environmental review, possibly also a parking exception as it's shown right here. So let's get into some details about this. This is a proposal for a hotel along Main Street, two properties, three underlying lots in the MCR R4 North Main specific plan zoning area. The project is just over 20,000 square feet as proposed in this concept plan. It has three levels. There's the underlying lots in case we need to come back to that, may not be important. Here's an existing aerial. Right now, there are two lots combined at 2130 that house seven generally small apartments, one is quite a bit larger. And then next to that, going north and to the left on the screen is just a commercial building that currently is being used by Rhythm and Roots, so we'll give them a little free plug right there, landscape company. And there's the existing site plan in diagrammatic format, in case we need to come back to that. So here's a concept plan. There are some good sort of perspective drawings we can go through. It proposes to have semi-subterranean parking. The lots, as they are now, slope up toward the rear, the difference is about four feet. So they were looking to take advantage of that to a certain extent. Kind of modern design, nice clean rectilinear lines, flat roofs generally, except for the sloping one in the middle section there. This is sort of a straight-on view of it. You can see into the parking area somewhat more on the right-hand side than the left. But all of the units, there are 34 proposed in total, 17 on two floors above that lobby area and parking area. The ones facing Main Street and to the sides have four-foot little decks associated with This is looking north if you're driving at Main Street or walking, not that many people walk along this, but this gives you a sort of different perspective on the building. And then more looking south. You can see that the parking, which is on the, sort of along the northern property line there, is fairly open, at least that one bay. So it kind of allows a setback without building at the northern property line. I have included the elevation drawings, and if we need to get back to that, we can. That's rear and front. And I also have, you know, the site plan drawings that you got in your plan set. So this is the first level with the lobby and parking, moving up to the second floor. The third floor is kind of interesting, it proposes a little pool and spa, kind of sort of to the middle of the screen along the bottom, adjacent to sitting, maybe dining, small bar area. And here we are back again along Main Street. So in the staff report, I have a listing of topics that you may or may not want to comment on under project considerations on page four, frontage improvements, architectural style, exterior materials, et cetera. You may have your own list of items. Honestly, everything's kind of on the table now, and I'm sure that both staff and the applicant would like to hear just, you know, what you're, what you like about it, what your concerns might be, what your questions are that you would like to see answered with a complete application in the future. And since that's why we're here, I'm going to be quiet now and start writing furiously. I'll answer your questions. And we have the property owner, John Belcher, here, and Joel Snyder from Tenover Studios to make their presentation and also answer questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Whitney. Are there any questions for staff at this point? It's not an action item, so we don't have to. Okay, seeing none then. I would like to go ahead and open this for public comment. We'd like to give the applicant or applicant representative a chance to speak first, and we do appreciate your waiting for us. Thank you very much.
No problem. Lot of information thrown around tonight, some of it that applies to why we're here. I'm John Belcher. I've known Scott for years. It's really good work in Pismil Beach. So when he suggested a conceptual review as a new path, I thought, "That's a great idea." So I'm glad to be part of that initial movement and hope it works out for the other applicants, and I think it'll work out tonight. My family's been here since 1950, I was born here. My grandkids are the fourth generation here. My son-in-law and I own this project together. What we bought was a rather rundown seven-unit apartment building out of a bankruptcy. The property hadn't been really renovated for many, many years. I do a number of other projects, and so I thought, "Well, what can I do?" I thought, "Maybe I can renovate the multifamily." Unfortunately, your zoning ordinance, which you'll be going through in no time, has a very, very limited density allowances for multifamily, and I think, I hope you'll look at that. So I will never be able to renovate this property as multifamily. But I think it has a really great address and use as visitor-serving. What I did is three or four things, using your mixed-use zoning here, which is really nice, very flexible, you do have standards in your specific plan for this area, so there's some guidance there. I took a look at a very successful, very medium-priced hotel in San Simeon called The Courtesy Inn. They have, a friend of mine owns it, they have an indoor, very small indoor pool, bigger than this one, but it's just a fantastic place for families. So I thought we could do that, take advantage of the views, presence on Main Street, and we're looking to see what you, what you like about it. I asked the architects, Tenover from San Luis Obispo, who work with me on a number of projects, if they would look at Morro Bay architecture, try to make this fit in. I asked with the help of staff here to have almost a 25-foot setback on the north side, which allows the one-two-story building that's behind us to actually see to the ocean where we would otherwise be able to build. I asked them to make sure it was fully parked, and, and then, the last part of this is that I, I do work on water reclamation projects for other projects in other jurisdictions, so I'm quite familiar with the challenges of offsetting your water demand. I fully expect to be able to do that here, using some of the innovative technology I've used and applied in other cities that has not been applied here yet. I also work with a graywater consultant, and I expect to be able to use graywater in this project, which would be really useful for the laundry aspects of the project. So I want to introduce Joel Snyder, who's with Tenover Architects, he's the principal owner, and he's, it's really nice that he's able to come tonight. I'm happy he's here, he's going to just walk through the same color pictures you've got, maybe show a little bit of the design inspiration, and, and let's see what, see what everyone thinks. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I borrow that clicker? Good evening, everyone, I'm Joel Snyder with Tenover Studio. I'm going to advance this a little bit. Does this have a laser as well?
Does it make sense?
Yeah, it does have a laser, great. All right. Well, thanks for the opportunity to present this project. I actually like doing these conceptual reviews, we've done them quite a bit. They're a great way to have a conversation about the project. It's great that there's, no decision that needs to be made today, but it's, it's a great way to introduce the project here, your feedback, and then we get to come back and incorporate that into the project. And whether I like to admit it or not, usually it makes the project better. So, you know, here's our proposed project. So there's been some development on Main Street, and, you know, there's some new buildings out there with some new colors, and that's actually really refreshing to see. So we hope that this project is complementary to that, and is of a high enough caliber design that it welcomes other projects of that caliber. So maybe it'll end up refreshing the north end of Main Street. You know, Morro Bay is a special place, it's a unique place. I've spent a lot of time here, I'm a surfer, I spent a lot of time here. When I come to Morro Bay, there's some, you know, with my particular brain and what I like to look for, I look at buildings and community, and there's some buildings in, in Morro Bay that really stand out to me and really say Morro Bay. And these are contextual shots, but you've got some, you've got some nice projects down on the Embarcadero that have, you know, really sort of speak to some of that architecture that's happening in Big Sur. Some of that, it just has that seaside feeling, it just really has that eclectic Morro Bay feeling. And I see those projects, I like those projects, they've kind of stood the test of time, they're really unique, and, and they have unique materials and unique colors, and we tried to pull some of those materials into our project. So we use the zoning regulations, we use what was allowed, and we use some of those projects that we like and brought them into this project. So, and that's how we ended up with the specific architecture you see here. And, you know, in designing the project, every project is site-specific, but we felt we were especially sensitive to the site. I'm going to go back to the pre-development site plan and point out a couple things. So this is the existing seven-unit apartment building. It's two stories in height, along the back, along a portion of the back. You know, that's a proposed building that we'll demolish, propose to demolish. And then this is a, it's a single story, but it's like a story and a half building that's proposed to be demolished. This is a two-story, single-family residence. This is a single-story, single-family residence, this, and these are single-story, single-family residences. And what I want to point out is that we'll be removing this building, and we've really justified our building to the south of the lot. And so where this is approximately a 20-foot tall building above existing grade, our building at that location is about 23 feet above existing grade. And I'll go to the elevations and show you that in a minute. So we were able to get the size of building in we need and only increase that height limit three feet along that property line. Also, by removing this building and justifying the building again to the south, we're able to actually open up views for this particular residence. So the only two-story, single-family resident to the east of the property actually, I think, will achieve a better view as the result of this project. So this is our site plan. One thing to note is that this is the line of the second and third floor above, so we've pulled the building back, you know, quite a distance off of the north property line, and that will actually allow a view corridor through here where there once wasn't one. And getting to the little more technical documents, you can see here, this line, this dash line is the existing grade. Main Street's out here, the rear property line is back here. We're semi-subterranean, and the point from that line to the top of the roof at that location is about 23 feet. So as opposed to what's approximately 20 feet now. So if you have any questions, John and I are here to, and I guess Whitney's here too, to help answer any questions you may have.
Very good, thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to speak to this project?
Betty Winholz. I believe it says in the staff report that the requirements for this area are two-story and 25 feet. And then it also says that this is a three-story building at 30 feet. And I've assumed that that 30 feet is because of the sweep of the roof line coming towards Main Street, and that that's why there's an exception. And maybe that's really nice to have the 23 feet on the back next to the houses right behind it, but as that sweep goes up, and if you allow a 30-foot thing, roof line, that actually impacts the views of people on other streets behind it. And so I, I would encourage you not to allow an exception of 30 feet, and to keep it to the 25 feet. And if they can fit three stories under the 25 feet, fine, but I think it's important to note that the staff report didn't address the, the number of levels of the building, only, only the height limit. There was also a comment in there about maybe reducing the size of the parking spaces, and I'll repeat my comment from earlier, vehicles are not, that come here, particularly from the valley, aren't necessarily small vehicles. They're full-size vehicles, and I think you need full-size parking slots. And I think those should be accommodated within the property line, otherwise they'll be lining Main Street or the neighborhood behind or somewhere else, particularly if they're pulling a boat or something. Was there one other thing I wanted to say? Besides the 30-foot being a concern for blocking views of people behind, it's also, I believe, a precedent-setting issue, and I don't think we want to set that kind of I, I am encouraged by the fact that it is a commercial piece of property on Main Street, because we usually do the opposite, which is put residential on Main Street when it's supposed to be commercial. So I do, I do appreciate that. I think that that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak? With that then, we will bring it back to commission for review and comment. Jerry, I think you're, I think you're up.
Whitney, how does the, the terms read on the exemption for the 30-foot? Is it for a peaked roof or a sloped roof? There's a, there's allowance for, it's 25-foot height limitation, then there's allowance for 30 feet if you're using a sloped or peaked, or what is the, what is the actual terms that we have?
Sloping.
A sloping.
The word is sloping, I think, yes.
Okay.
And I, can I just clarify, please? In the North Main specific plan, it generally encourages buildings not to be taller than 25 feet, and it does talk about two-story buildings, but it also does very specifically talk about subterranean parking, or semi-subterranean. I think it uses the term semi-subterranean parking, which this does. So just to clarify that, the level question. And then it allows for roofs to be up to 30 feet with sloping and with planning commission approval.
Okay. Do we question the applicant at this point, or just staff?
I can reopen if you would like to, if you have a question for the applicant.
I do.
Okay. So we have a question for the applicant, so I'll reopen public comment for that purpose.
Okay, so part of my questions are, on citing this project, you have, the way I read the elevations, you're about three-quarters of a foot, you're about nine inches below grade on, from the, from the curb line. Can, once you're below the curb line, you're basically, you've got all the drainage problems you, you encounter with that, as far as sump pump, or, you know, pushing, getting, collecting the water catchment or, or something, then recollecting the water. What would be the What would be the detriment for you dropping it another foot or two feet and still be able to get your ramps? You said you have a maximum of 10% ramp coming in, but yet you're level, you're pretty much level on that ramp. So, what, 10%? You've got 20 feet. You could drop it two feet and still keep your 10% slope on that.
Yeah, I think we can... Yeah, absolutely. I think that's something we can look at.
I know that because we have to...
We do have parking on this?
There's another complication, which is that Public Works wants to take more land. Even though we have a 10-foot sidewalk, they're saying they want another 10-foot sidewalk and further in. Now, I don't think we're really completed our discussions with them. But if we're required to move the sidewalk back, then I don't believe that we will make that 10% by dropping it. Because we actually did those calculations, Joel, at the early point in time. So, I... It's definitely worth looking at, but we were pretty constrained before we were told that we might have to develop another 10-foot sidewalk in.
Okay. So, this site plan, if they require another... If they require a street widening or another, you know, further sidewalk, then this site plan isn't accurate, then? Is that what you're saying?
Actually, she drew it. She drew it off the right-of-way line. But I'm anticipating that if we have to bring in further sidewalk improvements, that that driveway's going to get a little bit steeper.
Okay. You can see here, here's the property line.
Right.
And here's the line of existing improvements on the street.
Okay.
So, we were holding that line, but then we were told that we might have to push that back. If we push that back, we obviously are fighting that slope.
Yeah, then you're not going to be able to drop the elevation on that.
Exactly.
That parking. How are you handling mechanical in this building?
So, all of the rooms will have individual mechanical units.
A split unit?
There will be cases in the units, and then there's some common spaces where we've actually have room in the floor plan to keep them inside.
Okay.
And so, all of the mechanical will be internal. We're not putting anything on the roof. We're not proposing anything on the roof. If we put anything on the roof, hopefully it's solar, you know, you talked about that earlier.
Right.
Allowing the extra five feet allows for that opportunity, and I think that's one you're realistically looking at.
Okay.
So...
So, you're not... For the pool and all of that, you're just going to be running, you know, vents up through the roof? You're not going to be putting any mechanical on the roof?
I think that you might have some small vents, but it's not going to be any large, like, you know, P-TAC or HVAC units.
We have an equipment room.
And we have an equipment room, right.
Or the pool that's inside, that's interior.
An inside equipment pool, equipment room for the pool.
Okay.
That pool rests in... It's in an interesting area, resting like a story and a half worth of space. It's up above the lobby, and there's nothing... So, it's... The first floor is the lobby. Second floor is open space, and the third floor is the pool. And the pool goes down into that second-floor space. So, you've got huge room there below the pool because the pool's only four feet to accommodate a bunch of different equipment and amenities.
So, on the second floor, how are you handling the mechanical, the airflow for the interior rooms and the interior, the meeting room and the breakfast room and such as that?
There's interior rooms to accommodate the mechanical.
So, you've got room to?
Yeah.
To run the mechanical below the ceiling line or down?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I'm just worried about if we're bumping up against that height limitation if we have any decked work or any, you know, air handling units up on that roof, you know, I think we're going to...
Not planning it. Just, you know, plumbing vents that I think will be completely imperceivable. And if we do solar, I don't think you'll see them from the sidewalk either.
Solar panels, you know, are getting flatter and flatter. So, we're definitely going to have solar up there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good. And then there's a north-south section that it shows on the elevation. I didn't... We didn't get a roof plan. So, you have that slope section that runs east-west where the pool area, that's under the pool area. And then you have the Claire stories that run north-south.
The Claire stories just for a portion of that entry.
Right.
Yeah.
Can you drop that down to the 25-foot level and maybe do skylights there instead of that Claire story, which would block more people's view from behind?
I mean, I think you can, and then you're... But I think we added it for articulation.
Okay.
I think it adds a lot of benefit to the project. So, it can all slide under 25 feet, but I think it's not the whole building.
I'm happy to do a visual study for the neighborhoods. I really don't think that 15 feet of that section that slopes up is going to make much of a difference. I think that theoretically it might.
Right.
So, I'm happy to actually do a visual study when we bring it back to support or not support what we're trying to do there.
Okay.
So, I think that's fair enough. We'll do that.
Okay. Yeah, that would be helpful. And then have you considered on your exterior materials that, although this is set back from the beach, that there is a lot of salt spray?
So, here's how that conversation goes. I'm telling that to the architect, and they're saying, "We should go with wood because that's Morro Bay." And I'm saying, "Use a product that looks like wood, but it has lasting..." So, really, I like a fiberboard type of a product, a hardy board type of thing. He really feels that wood is the thing to do, and I think God bless him, he can put wood on his house.
I did.
So, I really do want to use a permanent-lasting material. And I think if we come back, we've got to give you a materials board. We've got to bring you some choices there. But I don't want to be staying in that wood.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah. And... But the rest of the materials, just be aware that there is a lot of salt in the air there because you get that northwestern breeze. And on, you know, on... When the surf comes up at four or five feet or more, you do get a salt spray in there. And then I'm not familiar with the siding material. Is it a hardy board cementous board material or what do you?
Yeah. The product I like is a hardy board product. It's like a plank product, and it has the appearance of like fiber on and some of those decking materials.
Okay.
That's a personal preference, but, you know, there's some nice things out there, and hardy board keeps making new ones. But got to be... We've got to have some resilience and permanency there, yeah.
And then you're also... You've got a whole community above and behind you. So, what, you know, what is that roofing material going to be? I know you're going to have solar panels up there and stuff, but have you considered... Have you thought about what the roofing material's going to be?
Well, I mean, what I'm doing in San Luis Obispo is the... I don't know the right term for it, but you probably do. They... It's like a heated...
Like a hapalon?
Yeah. It forms this solid thing, right?
Right.
But ecologically, we're also supposed to be using lighter-colored roofs as opposed to darker-covered roofs.
Okay.
So, since neighborhoods may see that roof, we should bring it back and show you. I think a light gray would be a really appropriate color. But I'm into light-colored roofs because they absorb so much less heat, and it'd be good for our overall energy efficiency. But that's the roof that I'm thinking of for the project, and we should be more clear about it when we come back with materials, I think.
Are you thinking about a catchment system? You were talking about gray water.
You know, if we have a gray water system, which I'm sure we will, we'll be able to include a catchment system very easily.
Yeah.
You know, it's a great thing in a big rain year and kind of a dud in the rest of the years.
Right.
But we got a big roof surface, so why not? The landscaping I designed has more natives in the front and some azaleas and, you know, water using things on the sides, you know? And then I'd like to have some green wall on the north and the south sides because just they look cool. And there's a place... If I got a gray water system, I could be able to use it. So, those rely on those cistern-type things you talked about.
Mm-hmm.
They drain down to the drip system. They have them in France. They drain down the walls. It's really awesome.
Yeah.
So, it's a dream to do that. So, I asked them to actually include that on the north and the south walls. So, you don't see much of a surface. You see, in the front, it's broken up by windows, and the walls on the north and south would have landscape features.
Yeah. That may even be nice on part of that western elevation, you know?
And maybe on the western elevation, too.
To break up, you know, some of those balconies.
Yeah, around the door and along...
Yeah.
Yeah, you can put those frames up, and you could do anything.
Yeah, they're fabulous.
Yeah.
Use of material, use of plants, stuff. So, yeah, I would like to see that.
Yeah, we'll put that on the next plan.
Okay. And then the hapalon roofs or that type of a roof system also is a great system for catchment.
That's right because it just collects really well.
Yeah. Yeah. And we can... One of the things you may not be familiar with, but, you know, on the summer mornings, we can get a quarter-inch of dew.
Right.
So, it may seem like we've got a dry year, but the fog... You can... If you can harvest the fog here, you can do well.
What they're doing is exactly that. In Paris, they use these catchments for morning dew and light rain and mist.
Yeah.
And they feed them into those vertical growing walls. They just have these little containers, and then they just drip down the walls, and they do 50-foot walls. It's just amazing.
Yeah. I think a green wall on that front, that west facade would alleviate a lot of the bulkiness of the project. And I think that would be awesome.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, while we have public comment open, are there any other questions for the applicant at this point?
By the way, I wanted to quote the sentence from the specific plan. This is ancient, 1989. But it says, "25 feet as to roof with a conditioned five-foot allowance for varying roof lines." That's the language, varying roof lines.
Okay.
The question I... The 24-foot setback to the north?
Yes.
What exactly will be there in terms of paving or landscaping?
Nothing.
What's the plan for that space?
There's parking below, and then nothing above.
As in, I mean...
Air.
So, you can see this vehicle parked here.
So, you will see the... It'll be the...
You'll see the parking.
The roof of the parking structure, is that?
Oh, it's not covered.
No.
Oh, just parking. I see. Okay. All right.
So, the line of building above is here. So, it's interesting. It's the way we can park the site. But you come into the site, and you can take a left turn into these stalls.
Okay.
At this point, you go under the building.
Right.
And so, those stalls, you go under the building, and when you take a left to park, you kind of come back out from under the building.
Okay.
But it was a way to, you know, like, get that relief along that property line.
I just had one question. Obviously, Mission Linens ban is not going to fit into the parking structure. What's your plan in terms of receiving deliveries and that sort of thing?
Well, we have some space at the end of the parking lot where the turn is for immediate delivery, but it's going to be... I mean, it's still a challenge, you know? And we have to work out those delivery details. So, but there is some space.
I've worked with a bunch of hotels in town, the... What was once the Twin Dolphin Inn and then also the Ascot Inn. They all have the same condition. You know, they all have partial subterranean parking with an inability to pull a delivery vehicle in, you know? But they just pull up on the street, and they get out their cart, and they walk in the linens.
Through the front door.
Right through the front door.
Okay.
You know, they all seem happy with it. So, we'll just address it the same way, I think.
We're going to wash our own linens with gray water.
Make more gray water, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I've got a question. You said that you talked to Public Works, yeah, regarding the drainage issue?
Regarding the public improvements, the street, the sidewalk.
Okay, the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Have you talked to them about how you're going to handle the drainage underneath? It's going to get pumped out to the street. If you are familiar with that area during a storm, it gets pretty flooded out there.
Well, as you know, the specific plan was formed with the intent of recreating the entire drainage along that street. So, it is a challenge. There's a lot of infrastructure right here installed to handle drainage. But I'm finding more and more that I have to de-water foundations in projects. And so, we're just facing this de-watering challenge all the way around. But I think the drainage, storm drain system, the feedback we got was that the storm drain system is adequate there. So, I think we're anticipating being able to deliver out of that parking structure with de-watering. And I think we might be ending up doing it anyway on the foundations according to whatever the soils report really ends up telling us. But we really don't have a choice. And we are part of the stormwater discharge district that we pay into. So, I hope it's working.
I think another thing to note is basically the entire site right now is pervious. We're actually...
The entire site is what?
Pervious.
Sorry, impervious.
Impervious.
I'm sorry. And we're... More percentage of the site will become pervious in addition to all the stormwater regulations that we'll have to follow in order to even develop the project to meet the minimum design guidelines. So, I think you're going to be slightly bettering the situation, even if you were to do nothing special.
Yeah. We got a pretty complete set of comments back for a first draft from Public Works, and they didn't have any issues with that. I'm sure they'll look at it again, but they didn't raise that as a concern.
One issue that you're going to have that is a fact is that the sewer capacity at that point is overcapacity right now. So, the city is... You're going to have to get Public Works. Something's going to have to be done there because you've got, what, 32 units?
34.
34 units, a pool, and a laundry room, right?
Yeah. Right.
Right. So, I mean, when you do your calculations, you've got to figure maximum flow at this time. And so, that document, if you're interested, as far as the document that came from the city that says that that line is overcapacity, you can get that on at morrowbaywrf.info. And you can find that document in there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. That was not brought to our attention, so appreciate that.
Any other questions?
Are you closing public comment?
And besides you already spoke once.
Well, I liked some... I liked the answers that we got back, you know, to the questions. I had concerns about, you know, about the sightlines on the roof. And if they're willing to do a view study on that, then I'm willing to look at the, you know, the results of that. You know, I also like the green features that they're, you know, that they're incorporating. I hope it's not one of the cases where, you know, where we get our hopes up and then they're dashed, you know, by the numbers. And, you know, I think this is, you know, if de-watering's a factor in the soil stability there, then the best way to do that is a catchment system. And, you know, and the reuse of that for a green wall, I think, you know, a green wall, you know, around that front entryway or maybe even on the spandrels on the balconies would really break up that front facade, which is the biggest impact to that building off of Main Street. So, having a living, you know, living, breathing section on that, I think, would really bring it down to human scale, which I think would really help this project. And I don't... I would like to see it buried as far as possible, but I also see that that's going to be a concern if they have to set that... If they're widening that street or widening that sidewalk another 10 feet, then they're not going to be able to slope down much. But I would like to see it as a, you know, as much as you could get to drop that down that way. If you could drop it a foot, then that roof line's 29 feet instead of 30 feet. And I think a foot or two is going to be a big help, especially putting, you know, the solar panels on the top. So, excavation in that soil isn't that hard. I mean, is not that costly considering. But I think it... And then also, what... So, but I think, and then also what I like about it, it's a commercial project in a commercial zone on Main Street. And I think that would be a more of a keystone project that would help spur that development. And the city will get more TOT. So I'd like to see it come to fruition.
Joe?
Well, this is certainly an example of much-needed investment in Morrow Bay. And the advantages that'll accrue to the community and to the city's coffers, too obvious to even mention, so I'm grateful for that. And it's an attractive, I find it an attractive design, certainly with respect to the parts of the structure that are going to be occupied by human beings, but I have a couple of comments to elucidate on that. And I appreciate the use of textured materials to provide some variation to the facades of the building. And as I look at the provision in the code with respect to height and slope, I take it that the 30-foot roof does slope a bit and it certainly gives, you know, much-needed roof variation to the top of the building. And it doesn't occupy the whole top of the building. So I'm willing to, you know, accept the 30-feet requirement. But there are some other suggestions and thoughts that come to mind. One thing is I'd like to compliment you guys on having a set of 3D renderings that really illustrate, I think, what the building's going to look like, particularly at street level. We're not always fortunate in some of our developments to see that. It makes it much easier to actually get a sense of what this thing is actually going to look like. However, you know, I'm left with an impression that were I to stand on the corner and look at the building, not on the corner, but stand in front of the building and look at it to drive by, that I would be aware of a large expanse of driveway and opening at the curb and the parking facilities. I think that, I don't say that would dominate my vision of it, but it would be, it's significant in terms of the appearance. So, you know, my hope would be that we could somehow reduce that, minimize it. This commission and various other commissions and lots of discussion in terms of the future development of Morrow Bay have talked about Main Street and the need to try not to break up the street with driveways and to conceal the parking facilities and somehow to sort of address, redress the sort of imbalance that exists now in favor of the automobile. So my suggestion would be, I'm not an architect by training, so I can't make any suggestion, but something that would de-emphasize the gaping openings for the underground garage and the driveways. I'd also like to see more extensive landscaping, just more of it in some fashion. And, you know, there's also been discussion in terms of commercial developments and how, and this may be at odds for a hotel development, but there were discussions about commercial development should be brought closer to the street to make it more pedestrian-friendly. And I know that we're sort of setting this back from, setting further back than it might otherwise be. And my final comment, I'd like to see a little bit more of that architectural articulation on the eastern facade, the back of the building, to be respectful to the property owners that butt up against the back of the property. And finally, and this is just, this is just a rumination on my part, but it is eliminating some multi-residential housing. And that's an inventory that's already constrained here in Morrow Bay. And I'm aware that the current apartment building isn't in the best condition. And I just wish that we could provide some incentives for replacing, you know, or, well, replacing or adding to that inventory as we demolish that building for the structure. I have, to be honest, I have a feeling that this isn't the appropriate candidate for that, but I'd like us all to sort of think about that in the future. Things are getting pretty extreme here. And while this is a much-needed project, and as I said, will bring much revenues, it will undoubtedly exact a cost on the community in terms of less housing inventory. And we do need to address that. That's it.
Richard?
I agree with Joe with respect to the housing inventory. There's some of the housing there, I'm told, is, you know, kind of affordable, you know, for people to live. But I also agree that this is an issue that we all have to address, not with this applicant. I, when, I want to take a step back a little bit. And when I look at a project like this, I look at traffic, water demands, sewer demands. And, you know, I realize we're doing this one water thing, but, you know, a project like this, and this is not directed toward the applicant in any way, okay? This is a little separate, okay? But your Public Works, you know, is, you know, looking at certain things, but there is serious infrastructure issues right there, okay? Now, we need to, as a city, need to address those, okay? And before we overburden already an overburdened infrastructure. This is something that is like, makes absolutely no sense to me, okay? Now, I'll get into a little bit of that history in my public, my comment from the commission, okay? Because it's not related directly to this project, okay? But when I look at this project, one of the things, when your inspiration, like when it came from a big sir, I worked up in big sir and it's like, I like wood and I get it. I get it's the higher, the maintenance cost is higher. The building, to me, it looks massive, okay? It looks a bit, it looks big. And the innovative technology that you're talking about as far as like running the, you know, some growth along the walls, I like that. That would be something that I think would help kind of green it up a little bit. I think that we should not try to, I think we should try to achieve the 25-feet height limit and, you know, and still be able to do the articulation. But my main issue with this is, is that, you know, before, you know, before we could talk about TOT tax and stuff, we've got to have the infrastructure that to support something like this. And, you know, at this point in time, I don't see it.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you for bringing forward what, to me, is a very nice and innovative design. Let me speak to the general issues first. In terms of the height, okay, to my reading, the 30-foot height with the slanted roofs is consistent with the code, the way it's written. Doesn't require an exemption, doesn't require an exception. It's consistent with the code. From a realistic point of view, you know, I drove around the neighborhood and I, the topography to the east of this site is pretty level for a long way, maybe four or five blocks. And so it doesn't, that, in that area, it doesn't really matter if you're 25 feet or 30 feet, it's the same impact. When the difference in height makes a difference in terms of view, and again, we're talking about private views, guys, which, we're not talking about public views here, but when it begins to make a difference is when you get past that four or five-block area and you start going up the hill. And, but at that point, you know, the arc that is taken up in the view by this project is extremely small. I mean, maybe like two degrees, something like that. So from a practical point of view, I don't see a lot of difference between 25 feet and 30 feet for this particular project. It might be, and I appreciate, you know, when I look at the plans and I look at the elevations, you know, I really appreciate the sort of dramatic effect of having that high ceiling over the pool, you know. It's going to be, it's going to be nice. It might be possible, might be possible, since you're saying the pool is only four feet deep, it might be possible to put a couple of steps between the bar and the pool and actually lower that a little bit, which would then allow the same roof height with a lower overall roof. I'm just throwing that out there. Again, I think, to my reading, this is consistent with the development standards in that area. So I'm just throwing it out. I am concerned about the parking situation. You point out that San Luis Obispo allows compact spaces with a width of eight feet. And San Luis Obispo scares the heck out of me when I'm parking there. And in most of the public parking garages, those are angled parking. They're not perpendicular parking. So they're a little easier to get in and out. So I'm a little concerned about, you know, I'd like, I don't have an answer. I mean, but I'd like to maybe, you guys should take a second look and see if you can recover some of those, some of the width on those compact spaces. I don't have a problem with not having the wheel stops, because those are basically for people walking in front of the cars. And that's not really a consideration here. The other thing, as I look at the plans, it looks to me like an automobile entering from the north side is going to have a heck of a time getting into space 30C or 31. That's going to be a really sharp bend. And conversely, a car coming from the south side is going to have a real hard time getting into space number 35. So I'm wondering, I'm wondering if you might consider making this one-way traffic through that driveway. And it looks like 31 and 31 and 30C could actually be turned 90 degrees, which would make it a lot easier if somebody was coming in from the north side, say, going south. Would make it much easier to get into those two spaces. But I'd just like, you know, I guess I'd just like to ask you to take another look. I'm not so concerned with the length of the spaces. I'm a little concerned with the width on those compact spaces. In terms of the number of compact spaces, I, you know, I drove around town a little bit and drove through motel parking lots. And it did look to me, I mean, this is a very unscientific survey, but it did look to me like about 30% of the vehicles in the parking lots were compact. So it's pretty close to, you know, to what we're proposing here. I have issues with the whole idea of compact spaces, but that's not your problem. You know, it's like, if I've got a, if I've got a big car and there's only two compact spaces left, am I not going to park in them because they're compact spaces? Probably not, you know. On the other hand, if I've got a little car and there's this nice big space available and nobody's there, well, you know. But that's, that's an issue with the whole idea of compact parking spaces as a whole. I do have a couple of just little specific nitpicky kind of suggestions. In terms of... And by the way, I'd also like to say that I appreciate your realization that hotels are more than just places to sleep. You know, I appreciate the fact you've got the little breakfast area, you've got a bar for people to go to, you know, that's important. And those amenities are lacking in a lot of the hotels here in Morrow Bay. I like the bar myself. The one thing I would suggest is, you've got, on the third floor plan, the little breakfast room looks awfully small. It looks like there's like 12 tables altogether, six on the, six on the third floor and six on the second floor. And that's, this is an awfully small little breakfast area. If this is going to be like a self-serve breakfast kind of place, people are going to be maybe bumping into themselves quite a bit. On the other hand, probably the meeting room's not going to be used much during breakfast time. So if you, you might want to make that partition between the meeting room and the breakfast room, something that's movable so that you could expand out into that meeting room when it's not in use. And the other thing, the other thing I'd just like to suggest is that you've got a classy-looking design here, okay? What's, to me, is not so classy about it is the exposed concrete block on both sides of the entrance to the parking lot, the south entrance to the parking lot. It seems to me it would be, it would really upgrade the curb appeal and it wouldn't be real expensive to tile over that concrete block or put some stone over that concrete block so that, so that kind of the appearance of that story is consistent with the second story and the third story, which are much classier. So that's kind of the input that I have. Any final words from anyone?
The other thing that might help appeal to is EV parking. So, you know, charging a couple of those compact spaces could have access to a Level 2 charger. And so it might be helpful.
So then, do you have, do you have any questions for the commission? I'll open public comment for that purpose.
I just want to say, we're working through all these comments. I think we'll make it one-way and angle the parking and reduce the opening. And I don't really think I want two two-way entrances right next to each other. So I like coming in on that south side, out on the north side. on the north side, and I think it'd be better traffic circulation, and I think we could angle the space, it'll give us more space inside to make the widths a little bigger anyway, and we can angle, so I think that all works really well. Yeah, Joel said he didn't like those pillars either, I don't know why he drew them on there, but anyway, so, we'll fix that, and, yeah, I just leaned over to him 10 minutes ago, I said, "You gotta put a charger on there, I have electric car," so I, you gotta put a charger in there, and, and I don't know what to say about the sewer line, I gotta do a little research there, so, help. And then, I don't know, were there other comments that, I think we could really probably accommodate these, you know, I'm excited about the Sistern idea, I always wanted to do that, the roofing materials, so. And I think we did not put much articulation on that east side, and probably, we didn't show much. I purposely told them to take out all the decks, and so there's nothing interfacing with the back, but I didn't mean to make it look bad, so we can still articulate it, we're just not gonna have any decks back there, so there's no interface, you know, and I'll even put tinted windows in there that don't open, you know, I think. So we're gonna make sure that the neighbors don't feel like we're, you know, looking in their backyard, or, I don't know, what we, we're gonna do what we can back there on the east side.
That might be a site for green wall.
And I, you know, or cypress trees, or, I know, those views, cypress trees would be great, you know, they go fast. They do real well in Morro Bay, too, the cypress do, yeah. So, and we'll look at bringing the building forward, but I keep getting pushed further back by the Public Works Department, so I gotta go find out what they really want. I'm gonna have the only sidewalk that's 10 feet further back, and all the new sidewalks are right where this one is, so I don't know what they want. So, we'll figure that out, and the landscaping, we, you know, yeah, we'll, we'll come back with a more complete drawing for landscaping. So, I appreciate the comments, I think we can do pretty well with almost everything we heard, so. I can't solve the sewer system, so I gotta talk to Scott about that, so, you know, so. Anyway, thanks.
Very well.
Thanks for your thoughts, and anything else, just pass a message on to Scott, he'll get ahold of us, and we'll go back to work. Thanks, Wendy.
With that, we will close public comment, and we will move on to planning commissioner comments. Any comments, future agenda items?
Yeah, I have a comment on this, in here, you know, Scott, we had the Public Works guy here last time, and we were talking about water. Now, this is, I haven't watched the last Morro Bay City Council, so I didn't realize that there's some of the changes with regard to that. But one of the things, after that meeting, I had a person stop me in the street, and they, they go, "What, what was the comment where there's MTBE in Morro Valley?" You know, well, MTBE was an additive that they were using in gas stations years ago, and a short history at that 1840 Main Street site, which was the old Shell site, they found MTBE in the sewer outfall, a year, this is before your, your times, you know, and they found, you know, 1990 thing, and then there was a little study, and then the regional board got involved. Well, anyway, the key issue, there's, there's a lot of confusion going on, and the more, MTBE wasn't in the Morro Valley, the MTBE was right there at that site, in the, in the Narrows, right there at 41 and, and Main. And the study that came out by the hired consultants of Cleethen Associates, they did a study, and they said that the nitrates in our Morro Basin aquifer had nothing to do with the MTBE. Now, years later, one of the things that can't be explained, and I think this is very important, especially when we're looking at all this infrastructure and all this development right here, is that in 2002, the nitrates in our Morro Basin aquifer spiked, and to this day, there's no decent explanation. I had a, I co-authored a report that shows a explanation why it could be, and it was through that remediation action and sewage entering our drinking water aquifer. Five years later, it was proven, okay? Now, this, and this is why I get a little upset when Public Works, they sent a letter to the state saying they ruled out sewage, and then five years later, they were proven wrong, so now they changed the story, saying that it's all over the state. You know, we have a issue here, especially in this area, that we need to address, okay? And when we start looking at projects like that, you know, when we're entertaining developers, we need to be honest that we have a certain capacity issue. And I don't know how to kick it into gear here, but, I mean, you know, Public Works promised to fix this back in 2008, okay? And here we are, 2017, okay? So, I don't, you know, I'm, it's not a, it's not a who's right, who's wrong issue, this is a, the data is already there, the issue that we have is a given. A project like, you know, like these projects come in to, to us to look at, these are gonna affect our, our traffic, these are the kind of projects that affect our infrastructure. There's a lot of people wondering, where are we getting the water from this? Where are we gonna get, like, we have the sewer capacity, and now we're changing that? And like, you know, like we had that other project that we looked at, the Sonic project, and looking at the roundabout, and then, you know, when you talk to people coming down from Highway 1, southbound, and getting off around when the high school gets, you know, high school students in the morning, I mean, a possible another roundabout wouldn't be, might not be a bad deal there, 'cause it takes you forever to go to 41. But see, that's why I try to look at the bigger picture when we integrate projects like that, we can't just myopically look at, okay, this is a separate little project, this is a separate little project. We need to, especially of this caliber, we need to integrate it with what we have, okay? And I sometimes get frustrated, because, you know, you say it, and then, you know, it gets ignored, you know? And, and I don't think it's, it's not fair to the developers to give them a false sense, but, you know, we, we need to take care of what we have first, take care of the people that are living here first, you know? And before, 'cause, you know, otherwise, it kind of gives you the sense of like you're subsidizing. One of the things, I tell you, you know that, that expansion that they did, state parks? That they did in the Beach Comer track, where they put all those RVs? Those, that state parks, they say, "Well, state parks don't have any money." They use our sewer, they use our sewer lines, they're using our sewer system. Where are they at the table? When we, you know, when we, you know, you know, they charge for those spaces, where are they at the table where we, you know, why, why is the citizen subsidizing development for state parks to expand? We need to bring these people to the table and get our infrastructure, you know, have a plan there. And that's all part of the zoning and part of the general plan, you know, Scott, because we can't, we can't separate it. You feel me?
We look at all of these things as part of the environmental review process, they'll be required to look at the sewer lines, I mean, we're aware of it, Public Works is aware of, of capacity issues potentially with the line that's there. There's a lot less effluent flowing through those lines, because we're using a lot less water. And so as the projects come forward, they're, they'll be required to do that analysis. It's typical, I mean, that's, that's common anywhere, in any, in any city, not just Morro Bay, but in any city that, that has potential capacity issues in a line somewhere. Now, it is identified, that line is identified for repair, maintenance, replacement, and that, the idea was to do that as part of the, you know, the project that's gonna upgrade the wastewater treatment plant. You know, that's a little bit on hold right now, and we're sort of, you know, relooking at things as it relates to that, but that was the idea. But there are, but again, back when we looked at it and we had capacity issues, we were losing a lot more water, and so there likely is some capacity in the line, but they have to prove that, I don't know that for sure. It's just based on the water usage that's coming out of North Morro Bay. So, and our Public Works Department has looked at that. I think it just wasn't, this is a concept review, and so they did more of a preliminary review related to, you know, dedication requirements, access, sidewalks, public improvement, that type of thing. They will have to demonstrate capacity in the line to connect to it, so. And they're, and because they're in an area where we know the line needs to be repaired, they'll be probably paying impact fees as it relates to their fair share of upgrading the line, so, it's fairly common.
Yeah, no, no, what you say, what you say there, now, see, that'll give a sense where it says, "Well, you know, you're gonna have an impact." See, we're, you're already impacting, you know, and I grant it, I grant you, you know, there's those, you know, the water conservation and the little low-flow toilets, but you know, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, there sticks a certain amount of water to move the solid, you know what I mean? And the, the, you know, there's only so much conservation, you know, with regards to that, and then, you know, and development that would be supported, okay? There was, I'll, I'll hold off on that, okay?
I have a thought, and this relates to what I was saying before. I'd like to encourage the city council, as the Morro Bay plan is implemented, and some of the poorly maintained apartment buildings and some of the outmoded commercial buildings on that part of Main Street are replaced by better developments, we have an, we have an opportunity to construct an incentive in that, you know, a project like this, you know, I suspect the applicant is going to operate or, or lease it out to someone for several years and establish a record of revenues, and then apply a capitalization rate, and make a very sizable profit on the sale of this property. And there might be some space where some of those funds could be reclaimed by the city to subsidize or encourage either that applicant or subsequent applicants to build apartment buildings in some other area where they're needed. I think they're, I think seizing these undervalued properties and developing them, you know, there's pretty sizable margins, and there's a little bit that we might be able to bring back to, to do some things without relying on state or federal monies.
Well, and there are, there are a number of other measures that could be undertaken to help fund affordable housing. We, I don't know, I gave Scott a little write-up on some of them, we may have a chance to discuss it one of these days.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot of incentives out there, it's, it's finding developers that are willing to come forward and do them, you know, and it usually takes a lot. You know, usually talking tax credit projects and things like that to make them viable, and, and that's not always easy, or you're looking at a, a company that builds affordable housing projects, those are the ones that are typically the most successful, like People's Self-Help Housing. They own several projects in town, which I took an item to the council at the last meeting, that recast a loan and some CDBG, a CDBG loan that the project had, and some, and I think $50,000 worth of Lufi's that we gave it to make it work, and we're going to push that out into the future, gain another 55 years of affordability, really, I guess it's a net 47 or something like that, to allow them to rehab the units and to maintain them, you know, as affordable in the city, where they would otherwise have ran out in 2027.
Well, but, you know, my focus wouldn't even be relegated to, you know, below-market apartment buildings. We, just encouraging a greater inventory of apartments would be, you know, some welcome relief in Morro Bay as well.
Yeah, I think our general plan's gonna do that, I mean, we're, we're, we've, and this commission's talked about it, mixed use, you know, encouraging mixed use in our, in our downtown areas, that's gonna put, that can put in certain areas residential units upstairs. Heck, that's a, that's a benefit not only from a rental housing standpoint, that's a benefit for having people in the street that can service, you know, that can patronize the establishments in the inner downtown. That'll make us probably have a better opportunity to have more restaurants in the downtown that don't, that stay open later, and, and those types of things, I mean, it, so it all builds on itself, I mean, so I think some of the work that we're doing through the general plan and LCP update, which you certainly will see, is gonna do that, I mean, those are the conversations we've been having, try to put some people downtown, so it's not like rolling up the sidewalks at five.
Right, but, but I also think we, you know, we're, we're steeped in these notions of free enterprise and capitalism, et cetera, et cetera, but I think we'd all be surprised if we, if we, if we talked to a couple of, not that we would personally do, but conversations with a couple of commercial brokers from the region would probably really illuminate just how profitable some of these developments can be, and that there might be, you know, a, there's a reasonable return, and that there's a great return, and developers might be willing to sacrifice a little bit of their great return in order to, you know, do these kinds of projects as well. I realize we don't wanna discourage anybody, but we're not talking about discouraging them, it's, you know, making it just slightly less profitable, with still plenty of incentive to do the projects.
Yeah, I would just, I would just caution that we not get too far into discussion on items that are not agendized.
I'd talked to Scott on a previous, when we're, when we'd gone through the downtown redevelopment series, you know, I'd actually done, I worked with some people and did a downtown design guidelines that I'd said, talked to Scott, had him email to you guys. So I just wanted to let you know that, you know, I'd like to see what you guys think, what your feedback is, and I'd like to be able to, you know, maybe use that as a format or a beginning for discussions of what we can do for our down, for our commercial and downtown and design guidelines, 'cause I think that's really, you know, we talked about it today, but I think that's a really important part of this, of the zoning and, you know, and the update, and how we can fit it in so that it's, it's, can be adaptable, can be changed without having to go back through the Coastal Commission and a redo, so that we can upgrade it like we do our residential design guidelines. But, you know, that's, that's Scott's expertise, and, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, the idea is that we're gonna have them as, as guidelines for, for commercial development in areas, and then the idea was to also expand the residential design guidelines to the neighborhoods that were discussed earlier. I think that's the intent moving forward, is to do those types of things. I'm happy to, maybe on a future agenda, to bring that discussion, at least from the commercial standpoint, forward a little bit, so we can talk about it a little bit, probably not gonna do a whole heck of a lot with it until we're done with the general plan effort, because my focus is there, and it needs to be. But, you know, moving forward, I think that's where we're gonna be going, there seems to be, been an expression of desire on the part of the commission to go down that road, and I think that makes sense, and, and so, and if you have them as guidelines, we can update them, you know, as we choose, which is much nicer, which is, when we first started talking about residential design, you recall that I thought, "Oh, we can incorporate them into the zoning code," 'cause I've seen cities that did that, but then I was like, once we went, got done with the residential design guidelines and we had 11 meetings on them, I was like, "I don't wanna do that and have it something that the Coastal Commission has to certify, because that's, that's a whole other, we don't need to go through." And in fact, I talked to Coastal Commission staff, and they encouraged us not to do that, you know, so.
Yeah, but if we're gonna talk about commercial design guidelines, doesn't it make sense to do all of the areas? I mean, I mean, downtown, Embargadero, North Main, Quintana?
I agree with that, so that's, that would be the idea, is to bring back and have a little bit of discussion right there, I mean, so we can at least talk about it some, agendize it, I mean, probably talking about it more than we should now, like you just said previously, but, but I, that would be an item maybe in August that I'd bring forward. Our next meeting is canceled, it's July 4th, we're closed. And then the meeting after that, as you might imagine, is sort of full, so it would probably be one of the items in, in August, probably, that I'd bring it forward.
And frankly, frankly, I think the Quintana area and the North Main area are gonna be the toughest, because they have not developed themselves, you know, if you look at downtown and you look at the Embargadero, it's, there are established styles, you know, if you look at those areas, they haven't committed themselves yet.
Yeah, well, and maybe that's what the commission does, we just look at some, we look at some opportunities there, things we might like to see, and we incorporate those, so they accommodate the types of developments that we might wanna see coming forward, and then as things develop over time, they get updated, they're like, "Oh, okay, that's not something anybody wanted to do," and so you move on down the road. I mean, it's, you know... I mean, it's, you know, they have to be living documents, I think, just because of the nature of those areas, like you just said. And we don't know what those things are going to be when they grow up. Or when they, you know, what's the next step for revitalization? We have a lot of old buildings, I was just talking about it earlier today, we have a lot of old buildings in North Main. They're sort of ripe for redevelopment. We have a lot of them on Quintana as well, a lot of older buildings that are maybe not in the greatest of shape, that you could foresee, you know, eating some, sprucing up and/or replacement. I mean, it's getting to that point.
We just saw one project here.
That, that building is in bad shape. Yeah. So, and is probably at the end of its useful life, or would require a huge amount of investment to get it back up into a, you know, into a status of being in, in good shape, which it's not now, so.
So, just to be clear, you're thinking, I, I like Jerry's idea, if you were talking about a future agenda just for commercial, yeah?
I think just to, just so you could talk about it.
Yeah, one at a time.
And then, I'll take that. The idea would be, I'll be bringing that back later on down the road when we're done with the general plan LCP update, because that's going to inform some of this. It's going to tell us to go do these things.
Okay.
You know, and, but I mean, having a conversation now is, is kind of good. I mean, it gets you, allows you to talk about it a little bit, and it also is helpful to inform, you know, the general plan LCP update process. So I don't mind, you know, spending a portion of one meeting doing that right now, because I think it's, it's related to, to that other effort, so.
You know, my idea, Scott, too, is if, you know, we could set up a subcommittee, you know, to kind of gather ideas or, you know, see what other cities have done or something, if that would help move the process forward, because that's essentially what I did before. You know, maybe whatever it does, whatever the threshold is for the Brown Act.
All things we can talk about when we've agendized it.
Well, on the, on the bright side for Richard, I do understand that Sonic is developing MTBE slurry. It will be available.
Scott, will the, will the commercial guidelines for North Morro Bay be in some form when this project actually comes before us?
No, no, this, they, they will literally be going back, taking the input from the commission, and I would imagine in not too distant future, we're going to have a full smittle for discretionary permits in our hands. That was their intent. We took them through this process, because what else do we have on North Main that looks like this? Nothing. And so getting input, you know, now, before the permits were on the line, was very valuable, I think. And they can take that to heart, and like you, you heard the applicant say, like, "Most of those things seem pretty doable." Now we need to see what it looks like when they're done making it doable and see if we still like it. But that's the, you know, that's the, that's where that's, that's going. So it's going to be faster than that. I don't know that, you know, I mean, you, you heard what they did, you know, to get where they're at, and they looked at other things in Morro Bay, and they took that, and it sort of reflected that, I thought. I mean, you hope that's what most people do when they design projects. Unfortunately, that's not always the case. Maybe Sonic's first smittle might have been an example of that. Anyway.
You know, I, I just want to compliment, I like this, this conceptual idea.
That's all I'm doing for now.
Yeah. Just tell me Scott, I won't work on anything else.
But it, no, it does, it does, I think it makes it a friendlier interchange.
Less adversarial, for sure. Yeah.
So then, moving on to community development director comments.
I already made my comments. It's that the next meeting's canceled, so on the, on the 4th, we're not going to be here, so.
Okay. With that, then, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be here at the Veterans Building on July 18th, 2017. Thank you very much.